For the City of Utica Tuesday, February 13th, 2024. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Mo Leitz, would you lead us, please?
(inaudible) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Sakura.
Here.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here. So, missing one, we do have a quorum. We do have a public hearing tonight scheduled for 8:00 PM, so I'm going to get through as much of the agenda as we can. Our first item to do tonight is some police department awards. Chief Klosny, can I hand it over to you, sir?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and members of the community. It is my honor to stand in front of you and recognize the efforts of several members of the Utica Police Department. Daily, our officers make split-second decisions and put their lives on the line for the community. Sadly, a lot of work of what our officers do goes unnoticed and unappreciated. I am humbled to be able to stand up here tonight and recognize our officers and dispatchers for their dedication and commitment to law enforcement. Tonight's honorees will receive awards commemorating and memorializing their respective contributions to the City of Utica. Due to the ongoing nature of the investigation regarding this incident, I'll be very general in the specifics as to what went on. On December 24th, around 1:35 in the morning, we received a 911 call for a local business that was being burglarized. A vehicle was seen leaving that business at a high rate of speed. A pursuit by our department ensued, and the suspect vehicle was followed several miles outside of the city and several communities over. The vehicle crashed, resulting in three suspects fleeing the vehicle in multiple locations. Our officer was able to apprehend one of the individual and take him into custody. The results of our arrest resulted in the following charges being filed against three different suspects that have since been identified. Breaking and entering with intent to commit a felony, fleeing and elude, possession of burglary tools, felon in possession of a firearm, possession of a stolen motor vehicle, modifying a firearm from semi-automatic to fully automatic. And ultimately, we had federal charges filed against these individuals on continuing a criminal enterprise. Our officers recovered on the scene a stolen vehicle that was on Detroit, the stolen firearm that was illegally modified to be fully automatic, and there was over $10,000 in stolen merchandise and damage done to this business. Our department has been working hand-to-hand with our federal partners on this case and really putting together, solving, and identifying these individuals. This resulted in linking these suspects to possibly committing crimes in at least five different communities around the metro-Detroit area, and they're continuing trying to put the pieces together on these individuals. It is my privilege to begin the award process by starting with everyone that supported the investigation. Major incidents like this are not handled by one or two officers, and it's really a group process in getting some of these accomplished. As police chief, I stand up here proud of the team that we have and the commitment of everyone on this department. Dispatcher Roberts, dispatcher Malletts, Officer Bartra, Officer Bose, Officer Vaggy, Officer Agents, and Officer Sager, if you could please stand up here, please. The first award for these individuals is going to be the Group Meritorious Conduct Award. This award is presented to employees who distinguish themselves by performing exceptional service in a duty of great responsibility or of critical importance to law enforcement. I'm going to start with Dispatcher Roberts and Dispatcher Malletts here. And really, our dispatchers are the lifeblood of the department. Nothing happens, no officers get sent out, no supporting services happen without the work of the officers. Officer Malletts was actually in training and couldn't have came at a perfect time to really learn what it's like to have a crazy innocence go by. On-scene officers were Officer Stephen Bartra and Officer Ryan Bose. Officer Bartra was a second pursuit car, and he assisted in securing the prisoner and assisting with booking process. Officer Bose secured the crime scene and actually cleared the building with Sterling Heights Police Department, worked on the CCTV footage from the business, and coordinated the incoming evidence techs as they were coming in to process the scene. Officers Vaggy and Officer Agents were instrumental in conducting their duties as evidence techs. They responded from home, came to the scene, and as newly-promoted evidence techs were able to process the scene, collect the evidence, and really help secure this case as we move forward. Sorry? And Officer Sager here, assisted with Detective Rennelli in working with our federal partners, ensuring that one of the members was actually taken into custody. One member that's not here that's going to be receiving an award is Officer Elizabeth D'Amink. She is also in training. She responded from home, and she helped Officer or Detective Sergeant Rennelli in really processing the scene and helping him with any investigative search warrant stuff that he needed. If everyone could help, please help me congratulate the five members of the Utica Police Department on receiving the Group Meritorious Award. Next award I'd like to present is the Chief's Merit Award. This award is presented in recognition of unusual or outstanding police services performed by personnel of the department. The purpose of this award is to provide due recognition in those instances which any individual or group person acting in concert contributes to an outstanding act of police services. Sergeant Andrade and Sergeant Rennelli, could you please stand up here? Sergeant Barry Andrade was the initial responding officer to the incident. Sergeant Andrade initiated the pursuit of the suspects, followed the suspects in a calm, collective manner, radioed back to dispatch his location. Upon having the vehicle crash at the location, Sergeant Andrade pursued them by foot, called out the location as individuals ended up crossing I-94, and rounded a building by himself as he's trying to apprehend the individual. Sergeant Andrade put the mission and pursuit of justice above his own safety. Sergeant Andrade safely apprehended one suspect, which turned into the much bigger operation that we're really glad to see happen right here. Sergeant Andrade is a testament to what we like to see in law enforcement, somebody that epitomizes what selfless service is all about. Sergeant Vince Rennelli was our responding detective at the scene. He was our lead investigator, and he's been instrumental in coordinating between the federal partners and really putting this whole case together and expanding it to the reaches that it has now. Sergeant Rennelli was truly, his interview tactics that day is what kind of broke this case open. Sergeant Rennelli was able to get a positive identification of one of the suspects and was able to get the suspect to actually open up and give him a lot of information that was used for the search warrants here. Sergeant Rennelli's overall command and control of the crime scene in coordination with federal agencies contributed, like I said, to successful identification and ultimate charging of the three suspects. Both Sergeant Andrade and Sergeant Rennelli displayed the professionalism and excellence that has warranted a recognition of the Chief's Merit Award. If everybody could please help me congratulate Sergeant Rennelli, Sergeant Andrade, Sergeant Rennelli.[544.16][544.16](applause)
Mayor and Council, thank you for that opportunity. Mayor and Council, thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Excellent work. Great job, Utica Police.
Thank you.[566.29][566.29](applause) At this time, we're going to open the floor for public comments. Everyone will be allowed three minutes to speak to council. This is for any item that is listed on the agenda. So if you're here to speak about an item that is on the agenda, this is the time to do it, because we won't be having back and forth once we get into the agenda itself. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to any item on the agenda? If you could state your name and address, please?
Hi, I am Sonia Hansen, and I'm with Hanson's Running Shop. I do not live in the city of Utica, but our business is right over here on Hall Road. And I'm asking for approval for a race that we have every year on March. And the day-
You're on the agenda, ma'am. You're the petitioner for the-
Oh, so I'm not supposed to speak yet?
No. Yeah, if you're a petitioner, if you're the one who's made the initial request to be on the agenda, you will get to speak.
Okay.
Your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Stacy Smale. I live at 45273 Bronell. I'm here, I just wanted to speak really super quick about the proposed sports soccer facility. Just really quick, I was just looking at the map and how much land they want, and I just wanted to express my concern that I think it's a large amount of land to be using and allocating for a sports complex. I'm not necessarily opposed to a sports complex of that sort, but I just think that the city owes the, I think it was called the Phase Downtown Development, the year that they had asked for, without anyone else interfering with giving them some due diligence. I know there's concerns with environmental things of that nature, but allowing them the year to do that, I think, is in the city's best interest, especially with what I think is like some fantastic things that they want to do in return, like relocating city facilities at their cost and bringing a lot of residential opportunities to the downtown area, which I know is really super important to building our downtown walkability. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'd like to speak about, under the new business item G, special conditional use, 7525 Auburn mixed-use building. I understand that this is a proposed two-story, new construction right across the street from the library, adjacent to the recreational trail on the north side of Auburn Road. I'm a Parks and Recreation advocate and a trail user. My concern is the interaction of the two-story building with the multi-use trail. My hope is that if they choose, if this is, if the ground is ever broken, that the location of it does not conflict with the trail use, that they complement one another, and that it's attractive, that it benefits the city. And that's all, that, without knowing more details, that's my concern.
Great, thank you, sir. Please state your name and address, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dan Roma. I do not live in the city of Utica, but I represent the owners of the location that was formerly National Coney Island on Utica Park. First, by thanking the community for all its support since 1995, when that store was originally opened. As you are probably aware, a number of businesses, especially restaurants, have had problems kind of re-energizing once COVID ended, and we were not, we were not unique. And we have still, to this day, have yet to reopen a couple of our restaurants to their fullest capacity. Having said that, late last, late, early last year, we were forced, because of traffic and profitability, to close another location, and I sort of, with the owner, put this particular store on watch last year. Tom Giftis is the owner of National Coney Island, and he takes a lot of pride in the communities in which we operate, sometimes more so to his detriment, because he's willing to write a check to keep these stores open. But we attempt, we made several attempts at changing management, we did some marketing blitzes in the community, just could not see traffic reinstated at that location. Unfortunately, we, I wanted to wade through to see what the 1231 numbers looked like, and when we closed our books, I went to Tom and said, "This is not a tenable location, and we have, quite frankly, a few more on watch." But having said that, we decided to close that location in January. And so, again, thank the community for all the years we were there, and I will, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Johnson. I don't live here in town, but I'm the CEO of the Southeast Michigan Chamber of Commerce, the Warren Chamber of Commerce, and the Grashad Avenue Chamber of Commerce. So, I wanted to speak this evening to, you're considering expansion of cannabis here in the community, and the chamber is very much in favor of that. And I guess one would, might say, "Well, you don't live here, you know, how could we rely on you to come into our community and tell us how things might be? What are you doing in your own town?" I happen to live in Chesterfield Township, and I ran the petition drive last year in Chesterfield to get it put on the ballot such that we could have cannabis in Chesterfield, and it did pass. So I don't speak on behalf of your community, but rather where I come from, that I'm in favor of this. And I'm in favor of it for a lot of reasons. My members would like the opportunity to do business here in Utica. Additionally, there is great benefit to the community from the standpoint of increased assessments, excise tax, and other considerations like employment. And so, what I found with the cannabis industry and the cannabis people, they've been very reliable supporters of the communities everywhere that I've worked, and I've worked in a number of communities where they have been giving back more than any other businesses that I really ever have seen. I'll tell you a story. I worked in Warren early on, when they were considering cannabis, and at that time, they were developing a new city hall on the south end, and they ran out of money in terms of what they wanted to accomplish there. For example, they wanted to have a kids' with disabilities playground, they wanted to have a big aquarium. They fell short, and this chamber with its cannabis members raised $170,000 for that playground for the kids with disabilities and for a larger educational aquarium at the library. So, I'm in favor of cannabis. I think it's, they're good people for the most part, and they contribute to the community in a way that no other businesses do. And I hope you would consider to having as many as is feasible. I think, as I look at the demographics for the area, to the north of you and to the northeast of you, there's really a lot of folks living in that area, 150,000 people, that don't have any cannabis in their communities. They're going to come to Utica, they're going to drive wherever through Utica. I think they'll bring business to Utica and enhance the businesses that you have, sir. So thank you for listening to me this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Chris Herrmann, 57633 Yorkshire. I just wanted to talk about the sports complex being built north of Jamie Johns Field. Just want to say I'm in favor of this. It brings in not only revenue and, you know, for the community and surrounding businesses of Utica, but also a family aspect of things. I think we've seen what great things Jimmy Johns Field has done, adding not only an indoor soccer field, indoor softball, basketball courts, ice skating rink. It's just going to make it feel like more of a family vibe. I went to Utica High School, I graduated '04, you know, my family lives in the area. I'd love for, to be able to come down more, downtown more often, like host, going, catching a game at Jamie Johns Field, signing the kids up for sports, so all in favor of that. That's all. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be here.
Name and address, sir.
I'll give you my name and, I'm going to hang on a second. Okay, my name's Carlos Santia, and I'm a resident of Clinton Township, and I'm here to support your marijuana ordinance amendment, and also, I'm supporting the, and urging you to allow two marijuana facilities in the Park Lane Avenue, Park Avenue area. Access to this area is off of Hall Road on Utica Park Boulevard, and also off of Shana Road on North Point Boulevard. So, and allowing one, more than one facility will provide consumers with additional options. The area can support the additional traffic volumes for the two facilities. A marijuana facility actually generates approximately 25% less traffic than a typical fast casual restaurant. So, there's not going to be an issue with, with the traffic in the area. The extra facility will generate additional revenue, which can be used for community improvements and events. Many of the neighboring neighborhoods are either in the process of approving marijuana facilities and/or have already approved them and ready to approve additional facilities in their locations. Some of the communities in our area that already have marijuana facilities open are the Village Aromia, Chesterfield Township, which is in the process as we speak, the City of Mount Clemens, which is adding some additional-
15 seconds, sir.
-facilities, the City of Roseville, East Point, and Warren. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on the subject and would be happy to discuss the facts that two facilities would not be a detriment to the area.
Time's up, sir.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Attorney Michael Stein. My office address is 150 West Second Street, Royal Oak, Michigan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I've addressed this council before as it relates to the expansion of the, of your marijuana facilities, and I just wanted to maybe reiterate some of the things that I had said before, and actually piggyback a little bit off of the gentleman that spoke prior to me. I thought that they made excellent points, and it's some of the points that I believe I brought to the attention of the board before. And respectfully, I would ask that this board consider two licenses at the proposed location that you're looking at. And there's a couple of very good reasons why I believe that that location would support it. One is obviously you have some, several locations over there on Industrial Drive that have multiple road accesses, and you also have several locations that have parking lots that can service up to 70 cars, and I think that's a tremendous advantage, as we've learned from other cities, that that is a very big advantage. And in terms of managing the traffic flow, having parking lots like that is very beneficial. And I think what you guys are maybe looking to do is exactly what a lot of other cities have done, Lansing, Madison Heights, Mount Clemens, Ferndale, which was have an initial amount of facilities and then add more thereafter, and ultimately, it comes down to demand, right? Is there a demand for it, right? Is it something that your community members could benefit from? And I believe the answer, just as it has been in other cities, is absolutely. It's definitely different, different location than the ones that are there right now. I think you'll have the traffic from the east that would very much benefit from being able to have facilities in that area back there. And as equally important, I believe, is the economic activity that these facilities generate, which is so critical right now to your small business infrastructure within the cities. You know, I think that there's a lot of businesses back there that could benefit from some additional traffic, and the idea is obviously that when you, when you patronize these facilities-[1489.24][1489.24](phone ringing) That's not my time, is it?
Nope.
When you go, when you go to these facilities, that you're going to do other things. You're going to stop at the gas stations that are located by, if you're like me, and you go to Ferndale, you're going to stop at the Little Caesar's and pick up a pizza and eat it in a car before you go home to dinner. So, the idea is that a lot of people would, 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 would go to the stores that are around these facilities, and as we've seen, and there are some studies, I believe, I may have pointed you in the right direction last time, that they're out there, and some newer ones with Chicago, where some of the, some of the retail outlets there have generated a lot of business for the surrounding businesses. And so, I think that's a very important aspect of this. I think that this community, that there is a demand amongst cannabis users for more locations, and at the end-
15 seconds, sir.
-at the end of the day, I think the consumer ultimately wins, because it's healthy to have competition, it keeps the prices down, and it keeps, and that's good for the consumers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, we're going to let you go, and then we're going to have to stop for a public hearing, and then we will restart after that.
Okay. That's what they call ending on a low note, but my, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Rob Huth, 55807 Buckthorne, Shelby Township. I'm saying that I'm a municipal attorney, only to tell you that most of my experience in the cannabis world is sitting where you folks sit, not at the podium here. And I want to tell you about three communities that I've represented that have expanded the licenses, the reasons for it, and the good results they got for it. One of the first communities to have cannabis in the state of Michigan, allowing five different license types, was Harrison Township. That was before recreational was permitted in '18. It allowed for those five types on a drive along I-94, and it limited those numbers because there was concern, it wasn't voter-initiated in Harrison Township, it was Township Board-initiated, and the board just kind of stuck their toe in the water and said, "We don't know what this will bring to our community, we're not sure." By the time '18 came along, the community right away allowed retail, I'm sorry, recreational, and allowed for more uses than they originally thought, because it brought revenue to the community, and it was not creating problems. Just a little bit north here, Shelby Township, is now considering, has had public hearings, because it's going to change from Caregiver, who was one of the first communities in the state, they moved Caregiver out of the neighborhoods and allowed it to go into their industrial districts. Now, it's going to expand, most likely, it's had public hearings. Our police department came and spoke in favor of expanding cannabis use in Shelby Township in terms of allowing grow and recreational. And then finally, I want to say that in the city of Detroit, they hired one person to review all their applications. I was fortunate enough to be that interviewed with mayor, city council, and they permitted 33 applications there in the first round, just to see how it goes. They liked what they saw, revenue, not issues. They've changed that now to 37 more applications. We reviewed those, those have been approved. The city of Detroit likes what it sees, and it's going to open it up again. My point to you this evening is, you have a great location in Park Avenue. I know it well, I wouldn't have to work if I didn't take my family so many times to Dave and Buster's, because that place was a money suck. But having said that, I know that it can handle the traffic there. Having two locations as opposed to one will let someone like, you heard from Mr. Dan Roma from National Coney, some of the other places that are vacant, gives them an opportunity to compete in your community. The ordinance that you've crafted, very well done by your attorney, it gives you a lot of leverage. There aren't going to be issues if you have addition, well, I thought the attorney, I, whoever did it, very well done. You guys will have leverage, you let another two places open up in that area, and they can compete with each other and deliver low-cost products, good quality products, and be on par with each other, so your residents have a chance-
15 seconds, sir.
-have a chance to choose the best price for theirselves. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you so much.
What are you doing to my chair?
Mr. Mayor, sir, I'm making a motion to adjourn the current meeting and enter into the public hearing, sir.
Motion by Deanne. Support. Support by Robinson. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. We are in public hearing. And tonight is for the Community Development Block Grants. Do we have anyone- Do we have anyone from the public that would like, that is here to address counsel about the grants? And we are limiting all communication to three minutes tonight.
I'll be quick and to the point. I am Mo Leets, I'm a resident of Rochester Hills. I am the founder of Sparkle Network, which we do Utica Palooza, we'll be talking about tonight, besides what I brought for the council tonight. One of the main programs we do is called Prom Closet Project and we've been a big part of the all communities in a while. I brought some of the seniors from this area I've seen in the last few years, the kids who've taken part of this problem, this project now are raising up to at least seven a year. And I, like I said, I brought some of their pictures, you want to see some of these kids, of how we help them with free dresses, free jewelry, shoes, everything, so they can experience everything there is about senior year without it just totally blowing their family budget. Since we brought Utica Palooza to the area, that's our all-day version of how we look at Alzheimer's and dementia on my side, Women's Life, it's, they work with seniors. We now have families coming to us and seeing how we can help them because we do help seniors to seniors, literally in our organization, about helping how to, once they do realize there's Alzheimer's or dementia in their family, how to go about navigating the stuff that goes on in that world. So, we're asking tonight for just whatever the amount that council feels appropriate to divide among all of the other block grant wishers. So, thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Stacy Conti. I am the Community Outreach Coordinator for interfaith volunteer caregivers. With the number of older adults in Macomb County rapidly increasing, the need for support services due to frailties of age, chronic health conditions or disabilities, as well as lack of assistance due to changing family structures is growing dramatically and will continue to do so well into the future. For over 30 years, our organization has been providing free basic assistance to hundreds of frail, older and physically challenged adults, helping them to remain safely in their homes with the help of hundreds of volunteers. Such assistance has been helping older and disabled adults with transportation, chores, respite breaks, errands and loneliness. These opportunities provide fulfilling experiences for those who wish to volunteer, as well as support for those in need. The CDBG Safe at Home Project at IVC is part of our larger chore and repair program for older and disabled adults. This project was developed to provide additional chore and repair services in communities that allocate funding for this purpose. This project allows us to assist low to moderate income seniors and physically challenged adults with indoor and outdoor chores, minor home repairs and routine housekeeping. We identify individuals who cannot do these tasks on their own and have limited resources and prioritize those with the greatest need. We are requesting the CDBG funds to increase the number of low-income citizens we can reach to grow our program, as well as coordinate the volunteers who do these services. IVC provides over 20,000 hours of help over all of its services to nearly 500 people in need each year. In the first quarter of this current CDBG program year alone, we have already been able to complete our projected number of projects in Utica, thanks in great part to the CDBG funding we received, so we are very grateful for that. We hope for continued support and funding in order to maintain the increase of Utica residents, we have been able to assist with the Safe at Home Program. The appreciation for assistance is so heartwarming for people such as Dave, whose porch we repaired so he was able to safely take his wife to the doctor, 12 hours of volunteer assistance for somebody who had a tree fall in their yard, and helping to organize somebody's home so that they have motivation to keep it clean. Other examples of help through this project might be replacing locks, washing windows, breaking leaves, routine housekeeping and installing smoke alarms. Thank you for your consideration, we appreciate the, the past support and any support you are willing to give going forward. And if anybody knows anybody who needs assistance or looking to volunteer, our website's www.ivcinfo.org. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody had any. Well, thank you.
I believe we got a letter of support from one of our residents for the screw TV.
Yes, Paul Cons is, he's one of our, he doesn't volunteer as much anymore, but he used to volunteer very frequently with us and he's a resident of Utica and supports us every year. So, we appreciate that support so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Heather, I'm a case manager with Turning Point Shelter Program here in Macomb County. Turning Point has been providing a safe place for families fleeing violence since 1980. Between July 1st, 2022 and June 30th, 2023, Turning Point serves seven Utica residents. Turning Point's Emergency Shelter Program is a safe haven for survivors of domestic and sexual violence. It provides immediate safety, crisis intervention and resources to families trying to establish basic safety. The project is a multifaceted approach to ending the cycle of violence in families today. Turning Point's two shelter case managers meet with new, new shelter residents within 24 hours of their arrival to develop an individualized plan based on their goals and needs. They also work on a plan for safety, housing and financial stability. This plan can include literacy, immigration, credit repair and supportive counseling for domestic and sexual violence after leaving shelter. The Emergency Shelter Case Management Program has developed collaborations and linkages to multiple systems, organizations, businesses and churches that can help domestic violence victims maintain their safety when leaving shelter. There is strong evidence which states that improving survivors' knowledge of and access to these community resources leads to higher quality of life and less, and decreases the risk of re-abuse over time. Resource building serves as a protective factor that enhances women's safety over time. Turning Point continues to provide comprehensive services to children while they are in shelter, as well as after they leave. Children in shelter receive crisis support, educational assistance, safety planning and recreational activities, seven days per week. A day camp runs all summer long where they go out into the community and experience different events and activities. Many children keep in contact with us for many months after leaving shelter. A child crisis advocate works with children and teens in shelter and is able to follow them after they leave shelter to continue offering individual and group supportive services. Turning Point Shelter Facility is completely handicap accessible, has increased educational, indoor and outdoor play areas for children and teens, private sleeping and bathroom facilities, a multi-purpose room that functions as a dining room and family activity area, private dedicated counseling spaces and other office spaces for different agencies to come deliver their services on site that we partner with. If Turning Point is awarded the $1,000 of CDBG funds that we've requested, we would be able to provide hotel accommodations to survivors and their families when shelter beds are not available. We also provide hygiene kits, food supplies and other basic needs. Funds are also provided to survivors and their families to wash clothes and cover transportation costs. Thank you for your time and consideration. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Markle. I'm at 12435 Independence in Shelby Township. And I'm here today to represent Samaritan House. And it's been an organization that's been around for, for some time. We, we currently support Bruce Township, Romeo, Washington Township, Shelby Township is new for us and Utica came into our jurisdiction this last year. And in this next year, we're probably going to be supporting Macomb Township also. I work in the food pantry on Friday afternoons and, and it's sad to think that we have people that are hungry, that don't have food. On a, on an average Friday afternoon, when I'm working, we'll have, I don't know, we'll have, we'll have 20 families come by and we'll pass out about 150 bags of food. Over, we have, I'm, I'm currently on the board and I'm currently on the executive board and I'm also treasurer of the organization. So, I really have a heart for people that are hungry. We, we support people, our clients come through, maybe once a, they sign up and then once a month, they're eligible for food and they come by and, and it's a, you know, the price of food has gone up and everything else has gone up. But we, we're supported today by 15 large churches in the area, each providing two members to our board. And it's, it's quite an organization and how it supports Utica directly is that we've, this, this last half year or so, we've supported eight families and it benefited 150 family members. And we provide Easter baskets and Thanksgiving food boxes and Christmas boxes and we have a kid's summer program and, and backpacks and school supplies and gift cards. We, we support people beyond their food needs too. We, we help provide rent, rent assistance and utilities and we provide a number of other things. If people can't come to us, we, we go to them. We've got a dedicated crew of people that go out into the community and we have home delivery. We're, I guess we're asking for $500 for block grant money and.
Fifteen seconds.
We really appreciate the time that you've given me tonight. Thank you.
Sir, anyone else tonight? Does anyone from the public have any comments based on?
Hello, good evening, mayor and council. I want to first start by saying thank you for the years that you guys have supported the library with CDBG funding. As you know, our CDBG fund money we receive allows us to purchase items for our residents with physical decline and children with learning challenges, which greatly benefits that specific demographic within our city. Another great benefit to receiving the grant money is that it enables us to direct our remaining budget even further to meet the other existing needs and interests in our community. These things including purchasing specific materials that are significantly more costly like police and fire education training manuals. We are the only library in the state to own our current edition. It is so widely used that its replacements will be more often because of its worn-out use. Other services that we have been able to offer, notary services, children's programming, holding blood drives once a month, income tax materials, photo and document scanning, mobile hotspots, these are just a handful of the many services that are available, all free of charge, to Utica residents. Our library serves the needs and interests of all of our residents regardless of situation, income, and with little to no cost to them. We hope to continue to reach all residents with council's continued support. That's why the library is asking for $1,500 of CDBG funds.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. Does anyone from the public have any comments, questions about any of the presentations we had tonight?
Jim Stone again, just a quick question, how much is available in the CBGD funds?
$2,490.
You said 2,000? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to leave public, or a public hearing and go back to council meeting.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Deion, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. We are back in our regular council meeting and continuing with public comments for items listed on the agenda for anyone that just came in. If you were intending to speak to any item that's listed on the agenda, this is the time to do it. Everyone will be given three minutes to address counsel. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to talk to council tonight? All right, next on the agenda is consent business. I would be looking for a motion to approve all items in consent.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Ryan, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries, thank you everyone. There's no unfinished business, no correspondence. New business is the Utica Palooza Vintage Market and Taste Fest. There's Lynn, I thought I saw you, Lynn.
Hi, mayor and council, Lynn Carnes, Women's Life Chapter 9/11 President, also a 21-year of Utica. Lovely, lovely city, love you guys. And our chapter has been in Utica since 2015. Three years ago, Mo Leets and I, from Sparkle Network and Women's Life, approached us about doing a Utica Palooza. What does that entail? It entailed three events, actually four events, all wrapped up in one day in the 1.78 square miles of Utica. Keeping, doing, starting with a walk, the first couple of years, we did a road rally, we did a flea market and then we ended the day with a comedy show. So, we are looking for approval for this year's Utica Palooza on June 15th and a new potential location for the vintage market. The walk will take place at Grant Park, the vintage market. We would like to ask.
For the space behind the fire department?
Fire department.
The fire department, to use that, it's easier to control the traffic in and out versus at just the park itself.
And also incorporating a taste fest in with that as well. As you see on our request, we are also asking to put signs up a week before the event. So, on Sunday, we've got the eight areas, Hall Road, Van Dyke, the Four Corners, two at Grant Park, and then if we can put some signs over by the new location for the vintage market, that would be very much appreciated. You have anything else?
Any questions from anyone?
Any questions from council?
Yes.
About, well, you said you wanted on the June 15th, what time, what time are you guys looking at?
It would, the walk starts at 8:00 and then the.
10 to 4.
10 to 4.
Market, yes.
It's the market and then the Taste Fest would be in that same timeframe.
What's, do you know what kind of like footprint you're looking at as far as behind the fire department, as far as interference with normal fire activities? The reason why it comes, we always have to, there's a lot of coordination whenever, especially when we have anything with the car show. I'm comparing as far as the coordination as we related to that.
Did you look into?
So, I mean, it would depend if we could use the whole parking lot, that'd be great or we could just use kind of the back half and leave the front half. Obviously, we would want to make sure we're blocking off anything so people that were at the market wouldn't be interfering with the fire department and vice versa. I guess whatever makes sense is.
We may have a baseball game that day, right? What day is it?
It's Saturday.
It would be Saturday, so we have a 5:30 evening game.
5:30 baseball game? And the market would close at 4:00, so you'd be cleared out probably how long after 4:00?
It usually takes between an hour and two hours for most of the vendors to clear out, but the people would, like the shoppers would be gone. So, it would just be the small businesses needing to pack up their stuff and get out.
All right, if we could get a motion on the floor and then we could continue deliberation if needed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the Utica Palooza Vintage Market Taste Fest for June 15th, 2024, subject to the approval of the fire department. Any concerns with the usage of the parcel behind the fire department?
Support. Motion by Deion, support by O'Donnell, and we're open for any deliberation?
Do you plan on having?
Do you see any, Assistant Chief, do you see any?
Typically, mayor, when we have an event that encompasses the footprint of the rear parking lot behind the fire station, it's a larger city event and it creates some just- parking lot behind the fire station, it's a larger city event and it creates some logistical problems with coming and going. As most people are aware, we're a paid-on call department, so there may be nobody or a skeleton crew only at the fire station and the other responders come from other locations. We run about 1,500 calls a year, so three calls a day approximately. So what we've done in the past in these larger city events is we'll pay staff for that day so we don't have as much coming and going of emergency vehicles trying to get to and out of, out of the fire station. So in support of the event, we can work something out, but I just want you to understand it's probably going to be a cost associated with that and some staffing to minimize some. If they use the back half, it would be helpful, but there's going to be a lot of foot traffic in the front half while we're coming and going. So just a consideration for you and be happy to sit down and work our way through that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Chief Clusney, any concerns from police?
No concerns at all, Mayor.
Any other discussion from council?
Do you plan to have any food trucks?
No.
Restaurants.
Just like Taste of Utica.
Yeah, any cooking elements and stuff like that, please make sure to go through the fire department.
Yes.
All right. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Trenzi, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. And now we have a 5K run.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Sorry to make you wait so long.
Oh, not a problem. So yes, my name is Sonya Hansen and we have our yearly race at the Utica store, Hansen's Running Shop. And it starts at 10:00 a.m. And it's, we're just asking for approval to, to be, where the course is behind the store. We will have somebody at every corner. I know that was a concern for people, especially in the summertime. We had an issue with that, so we will definitely have somebody at every corner to tell them where to go. We have somebody, Kevin Hansen, will go right behind to make sure everybody's, you know, you know, make sure that that's taken care of. So we're just asking for approval for it and this is something that we've done many years. And if there's any concerns or anything like that, let me know and I can address it and ease your mind. But this has been, it's probably been 25 years, so it's something that we love doing and so. Do you have any questions?
No spray painting the arrows this year, right? I know we got.
Yes, that was, yes.
Couple residents called about that.
Yes, yes. We have cones. Lots of orange cones.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the run as presented for the Bill Roney 5K run and one-mile walk, which, I might do get that one-mile walk.
I'll do it with it.
All right. I'll beat you.
Motion by Deion.
We look forward to that.
Support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, this is an easy format. They've been in here several times throughout the years. They run a really good operation. Hansen is well-respected in the community. There's not been a glitch or hiccup that I've known of since the number of years they've done it. I think this is an easy approval for council.
That's why we're getting ready to take a vote.
Let's do it.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Trenzi, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And we got to hold him to the, the walk.
I will and I'll be out there, so I'll definitely be supporting.
I will do the one-mile walk.
All right.
Reverse it. The date's on the calendar here, what I've got there. Do I have the date handy, the walk? It's in my packet.
23rd.
3/23.
Or 22nd, is that?
It's March 23rd.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You don't argue with the clerk.
Next on the agenda is the Pioneer Park Pavilion. We did receive the state grant to build a new pavilion at Pioneer Park. We have the pre-engineering and I'm looking for a motion to authorize HRC to begin the bid process for constructing of that pavilion at Pioneer Park.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Socora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Trenzi, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. HRC said they cannot promise it'll be done by the Puppy Parade, which is unfortunate. But hopefully for the following year, right? Next on the agenda is we need to appoint a new Americans with Disabilities Act Coordinator. We have a new deputy clerk, Ms. Becky Livernoy. You will see the document that we must file and post in your packet. So tonight I would be looking for a motion to appoint Ms. Becky Livernoy, the Utica Deputy Clerk, as the City of Utica Americans with Disabilities Act Coordinator.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Socora, support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Trenzi, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. That gets us to the allocations for the community development block grants requests. I need to get back to that piece of the packet. So correct me if I'm not doing this correctly, but it looks like we have Sparkle Network, Interfaith, Turning Point, Samaritan House and the Utica Public Library. Mr. Socora, you usually do the number crunching for us on this, so I'm going to hand it over to you.
I mean, it's a matter of first, council has to decide who gets what and it is equal across the board. You have five petitioners. I personally would say out of the 2,490, appoint $1,000 to the Utica Public Library. I mean, this is our backyard. And then the $1,490 would then be, I would say, portioned equally between the other four groups.
I'll make that motion.
That was quick.
Motion by Ryan.
Support.
Support by Socora.
So the, the turning, it would be, Mr. Mayor, it would be $1,000 to our library, $298 each, so they have four remainers? Wait, did I do that math right?
1,400 divided by four.
Yeah. I believe that was the number.
$1,490 divided by four.
Forty. I lied to you.
No, you didn't do the math right.
I had five in there, Kenny, sorry about that. I'm not a business owner. I got all season high schools, that's why I became the police. All right.
So you got $372.50 to each of the remaining.
I was going to say 50 cents.
Any further discussion from council or Madam Clerk, did you have something?
I miss, I have Ryan making the motion, but I missed you, Socora, sorry.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Trenzi, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. I'm impressed by your long division.
The funny thing is, I was like thinking that, it's just like, wait a minute, it's like, how do we normally do this?
The next item on the agenda, the petitioner is not in town tonight and asked us to delay this until next month, which we will gladly do.
There's a motion since it's on the agenda.
A motion to postpone this, item 5F, until next month's council meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council?
Question. Since this was already voted on by Planning Commission.
Historic.
Historic Commission and everybody else, and it is, the petitioner knew he had this on the agenda today. Are we just kicking it down the can or is this a?
Well, I believe, we did advise him that it was going to be up on this meeting. His initial response was that he was going to be out of town and then, I believe, out of town, unable to make it. And so the city did request someone at that point. Did he wish that we adjourn it or go forward with it in here? So I think it would be appropriate, proper just to table it for a month.
Can I somehow interject that one way or another, if it's, he's here or not at the next meeting, we vote on it? Is that something, that's my opinion. Because this could go on forever if he just keeps on saying, I'm not going to be here, I can't make it, I can't make it. He's already done what everybody else on every other board and commission has said.
I'd recommend that you table to the next meeting and then we can address that at the next meeting if he doesn't show.
Okay, where were we at? Did we have a motion on the?
We moved to postpone.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Trenzi, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda is special conditional use for 7525 Auburn Road Mixed-Use Building. And I believe we have Ms. Dana Schmidt here to discuss that.
Hi, Dana Schmidt, President of the USPBL and Jimmy Johns Field, 7171 Auburn Road, and also owner of the parcel at 7525 Auburn Road. We are here today to request approval of the special conditional use for a new mixed-use building at 7525 Auburn Road. We presented our site plan to the Planning Commission last week and the Planning Commission voted in favor of recommending approval of the special conditional use as well as voted in favor of approving the site plan. This, in your packet tonight, is an overview of our new mixed-use building that we're proposing. And if you want to just scroll through the slides, this is, I came and already previewed this with council, but this is a proposal for a two-story mixed-use building. The ground floor will be 5,301 square feet with more than 1,800 square feet of a paved covered terrace that will be adjacent to the west side of the building. The front of the building will have 1,000 square feet of retail space, which will include our new hot dog restaurant, JJ's Dog House, as well as a merchandise store, USPBL Team Store. It also, behind that retail space, will have ground floor of about 2,560 square feet of office space for our new headquarters, for the USPBL General Sports and our foundation, the Sweet Dreams Project, as well as on the backside of the building, 1,500 square feet of meeting and event space, which will accommodate meetings and events for up to 100 people. There will be a second floor mezzanine with five offices for general sports and USPBL executives. That is 1,103 square feet, so total building square footage of just over 6,400, with also the additional outdoor covered patio space that will be open to the public and will allow us to serve people that will be going to JJ's Dog House. If you want to go to the next slide. Some renderings of the building. One of the things that the Planning Commission had requested from an initial draft of the building two years ago was that we make it look a little bit more like it fit into the downtown, so we changed the facade of this to a brick facade. We also, it was requested that we add more windows to the building, so we added more windows. This view is, you would be looking at the south side of the building, so those windows would be along Auburn Road. This road that you're seeing the cars on is the access road right now that goes back to the gravel lot. If you want to go to the next slide. This is the view of the building from the northwest, and this is the covered patio. The entranceway that you see there in the back would be the entrance to the meeting and event space on the north side of the building. So we've tried to meet with the historical details. I know Amanda's here and had recommended approval of the site plan and that it met with all of the zoning ordinances. If you want to go to the next slide. This is the site plan that is in your packets, so we can flip through this. This is the layout of the site plan with the building closer to Auburn Road and then parking in the back. There's landscaping as well. If you keep flipping through, you can see, this is the topography, so you can keep going. This is the ground floor layout of the building, so the retail space here on the south side of the building, which the restaurant would have a counter as well as tables inside and then also would have a walk-up window on the outside. So the idea is for people to be able to come off the hike and bike trail as well as, you know, obviously, people that would be parking to come, but to encourage walkability in the downtown and a place for people to come sit out on the covered patio and enjoy the river and the hike and bike trail. If you want to go to the next slide. This is showing the office space on the second level. The meeting space in the back will have a heightened ceiling and will be separated off from the office space so that it can be its own separate facility. There also are doors from that meeting space onto the patio as well. If you want to go to the next slide. This is part of the landscaping plan that was presented. And then these were the elevations, so the diagrams that you saw earlier. This is basically the layout on the inside where the restaurant will be, the Team Store, the office space and the meeting space. And next slide. Proposed retail space. Kind of already talked through this, so I know it's a long meeting if you want to keep going. JJ's Dog House is our concept for the restaurant. We just included a little proposed menu in there. If you want to go to the next slide. So it's all different kinds of hot dogs, not just one, different, kind of like modeled after La Puma's in Rochester. We also have a Team Store. This is a little bit about our meeting space here, our office space that will have between 25 and 30 full-time employees that will be moving from Rochester to Utica. And then this is just some pictures of what our meeting space will look like. The meeting space will be designed to have an acoustical wall where it can be divided into two spaces, so we can have meetings for, two separate meetings for up to 50 people and then one meeting for 100 people. We also will have a boardroom that will be adjacent to that meeting space that also can be used for corporate board meetings. And we will be marketing this to bring businesses into Utica to hold meetings and events here. So overall, this is our concept. We're really excited about it. It's been a couple of years in the making here of getting to this concept and we are asking for approval for special conditional use approval by city council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the special conditional use at 7525 Auburn Road Mixed-Use Building as presented.
I'll support.
Motion by Deion, support by Robinson. Discussion from council.
What a difference over a period of time.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, everybody went through what they went through, but this is really something much, much better than we originally started with. I think everybody in the city, your organization, will be proud to say that's your building. So.
Yeah, me too.
I'm excited with the change.
I'm excited for some hot dogs.
I'm excited for it to be a catalyst in new construction.
Yeah, absolutely. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Trenzi, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Let's get building.
Thank you.
All right, good work.
My question is, do you have a dog named a bear?
Oh, we've already said that. It's a recipe.
The Calendrino Dogolino.
Wait, I like that.
That's spicy Italian.
Mild Italian.
Yeah, at best.
Next on the agenda is the sports soccer facility proposal for the Packing Plant property.
Hello, thank you Mayor Calendrino. My name is Gronthick Chatterjee. I'm here to present for a proposed Utica Sportsplex. Could we start with the letter, the initial letter in that, in that packet? It might be on the other set of slides.
Hopefully I have it.
It was in the first attachment. There you go. Thank you very much for that. So we're here today to kind of, to go through this packet, obviously, that you guys have had an opportunity to look, so I won't, in the interest of time, I won't go through everything here, but there is a great need for sports facilities in Oakland and Macomb Township. These are indoor/outdoor fields for recreation, for the community, and for young, you know, mainly for kids growing up in these communities. There's a dearth of these fields and dearth of these complexes, so there's a, there's a large need for them, for a variety of different sports and for a variety of different uses. So it's with real enthusiasm that I want to really talk to you guys about this idea of creating a Utica Sportsplex. And in deference to, to the lady that just spoke before me, one of the reasons why I think we really wanted to do it here is the downtown area here in Utica has, has so many possibilities, and with Jimmy John's already existing, the, the kind of larger thought was Sports Town USA and having that be here in Utica and to kind of compound the effect of what you already have here with Jimmy John's. Obviously, now you have this new building that's just been, been approved to move forward with, and how can we add to that and how can we bring lots and lots of traffic in here to Utica that will benefit its residents while also creating something that will be of great benefit to all the kids and the families that are here in Utica and also bringing children and families from all around southeast Michigan and abroad to come into a complex such as this to play, recreate, enjoy, and then spend time within this community. So with that being said, what are the, what are the main things that we're proposing here? Is multipurpose fields. These can be used for soccer, football, lacrosse, other team sports. We're looking for a stadium field to run events, excuse me, events and games out of. Indoor facilities for pickleball, volleyball, basketball, golf, other indoor sports. Walking and jogging tracks for the community that will enhance. I think the, earlier tonight, I, this gentleman right here in the front row was speaking about the, the trails that we already have. How can we enhance that within this community as a, kind of, these trails will go all the way up, obviously up into Riverbends. So the walking and jogging tracks, playing areas for children, community rooms for meeting and events, which obviously exist also in the building that was just proposed before us, educational programs, concession stands, restroom facilities. All of these things, I think, will go a long way to adding to the vibrancy of this community and building upon what already exists here currently. And, you know, I think that's the, that's the plan, right? A sports complex like this will be designed sustainably, you know, as best as we can with the, the technology and the, and the dollars and the sense that we have, so that that's a positive impact. We create a really nice environment and a healthy one for all of the children and adults that will be utilizing it. In addition, you know, to providing these recreational opportunities, the sports complex will also serve as a venue for local sports leagues, tournaments, community events. And I think, you know, another big, big aspect of it for the community here is the driving of business and the kind of sports tourism dollars that venues like this create. I've spent the last 20 years of my life in youth sports, and one of the big things that I've seen occur around the country is the development of a variety of different sports complexes from three to four field complexes to 20 field complexes and what these do to allow for large tournaments, large events to come into a city, and then what that does to the dollars and cents that get spent in that city. As a small example, there is a soccer tournament in Richmond, Virginia, that was one of the largest tournaments in the country and got rained out four or five years in a row. And when that tournament got rained out four or five years in a row, everyone stopped going. And this was such a detrimental impact to the city of Richmond that the local soccer club and the city came together, raised bonds, raised money, and created a $30 million field turf complex with lights just to have that tournament come back because of the dollars that are spent there throughout, you know, throughout time and over the years to ensure the games would get played. So this is just a small example, not, not necessarily our case, but the idea of what the ecotourism can, can bring, right, or not eco, sports tourism can bring. So if we can go to the next, next slide there. Should be the, the next letter. Well.
That was the next letter.
Okay, that letter. Okay, there we go. In this, I, I have partners in this, clearly, that I won't go through the entire list, but we are also partnered with some of the largest companies in developing these facilities in the country. So SFC, which is located out of Florida, has over $15 billion of these facilities developed under management or helped to, to develop. So they've got complexes all around the country. They are one of our partners as we look at this. We'll see some of their work a little bit later on in the presentation. Between SFC, ISG out of Minnesota is another set of partners, and Yedon, which does the bubbles, sports bubbles that you'll see proposed in this package. These, these various partners will help raise the money. They will help in the assessing and building and construction. They are, they have all the resources to put these facilities up. They will also help in the management of said facilities. All of these things are available for our group to utilize or not utilize based on what we want to do in-house and what we want them to, to help support us with. But I want you to know that as we look at this proposal, that these partners are eminently qualified for the development, building, construction, and then management of said facilities, beyond, beyond me, right? I want you to know that. This is not just, not just me standing up here. We have a team of people behind us. And if you look at the bolded line, it is SFC's estimate based on what you will see here, which is about a four-field complex, that there's 11 to 18 million dollars of direct economic impact to this city, based on the downflow, you know, the, the kind of waterfall of people coming in here, spending money before soccer practice, after soccer practice, for tournaments, for games that come in, spend the night in hotels, spend money in your restaurants, so on and so forth. Okay? Now we can go to the, to the slide you just had up. Sorry, thank you very much, Mayor Gus. This is the proposed site. This is actually coming from, from your assessor, this site map and then the acreage on it. So out of this, I, I put this up here so that you could see, this is roughly a 32-acre parcel of land on this old packing plant property. It's currently not being utilized for anything that I am aware of. It has some brownfield issues associated with it. It is my understanding, and I've been encouraged to pursue to the point where we're at right now in this proposal, that there is going to be a Phase II environmental done on this land, and based on that result, we'll know exactly how to move forward, for, for our purposes anyways, for a sports facility, should you approve us the, the time needed to kind of explore this further, is, once a Phase II is done on this land, we'll know exactly what, what we can put on it safely, and you'll see that coming up afterwards from just outdoor fields to a bubble. We have also, we also have plans that could go with a steel-constructed building. So there's a variety of different things we can put on it, and as you'll see as you go through this slide, I've just tried to paint a picture of what this land could look like going forward. You can go to the, you can go to the next one. So this shows a, one of our partners, ISG and Yedon Domes, has created a site in Minnesota called the Cloquet Site, and you'll see that in the next, in the next slides. This gives you an idea. So it's about 18 acres for all of those soccer fields, and in this particular development, and of course, as we develop something for this site and in the next meeting, should we go that far, in the next meeting, I'll have a far, much, much more developed site plan for you all. This is the Cloquet Site, and you can see that they have, kind of have, it's, it's shadowed out, but you'll see it in the next slides. The, the center of it has parks in it, so the current dog park that exists, more recreational facilities for children can also be included in it. It just might change location compared to what this Minnesota site looks like, but I just wanted to present that to you because the 18 and then that four acres there still leaves quite a bit of land on the 32-acre footprint that you got, that, that is available here for us to, I know there's been thoughts about relocating the building that we're standing in right now, relocating certain things that will be for the benefit of the city, and I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we're here to work with, with the city on anything and everything it might want to do with its own buildings. In addition, that, that, there's space for it. There's room for it on, on this proposal to make any of these things happen. So we could go to the next, next slide.
I think that's all I have.
No, there, there's a whole nother.
I think there's another file, maybe.
That's it, that's it. It's just, it's separated into the second file. Sorry for that. I couldn't fit it. It wouldn't all fit into one.
Just give me one second.
Here we go. So this is the Cloquet Athletic Complex. So what you just saw grayed out, this is it in, in further detail, so you can kind of see the, the three outside soccer fields. You can see the bubble, and within the bubble, you see the greened-out area, the light green, greened-out area in the upper-left side. That would be a soccer field. There's also space in there for gym. There's also space in there in this particular one for basketball courts slash pickleball courts. That's on the north side, on the, on the furthest north area. That's all inside of the bubble. You can see the park space then, just south of the bubble, there's some park space that would align more or less to, I think, what the current dog park would be. Two other fields. All of that is that 18-acre footprint right there. And then you can see the hockey spaces to the right-hand side. Clearly, it's Minnesota, so they got some hockey going on, but the hockey on the right-hand side, that was the extra four acres. Really, really beautiful complex, clearly well-thought-out, bespoke, tailored to that particular plot of land, as these companies would do for, for us on this, this site as well. Okay? We go to the next one. That is the constructed view of how that site looks like, the exact same site with the exact same kind of, just a different viewpoint of it, just so you can kind of picture it in, in your mind's eye on top of that, on top of the land that currently sits there for the packing plant. Obviously, everything can be moved in one direction or another. It can, it can all be tailored exactly to, to what we would like to see there, and we would like to do that in conjunction, obviously, with the, with the city and the council. You can go to the next one. There's a, this gives you the inside space, so you can see the 11v11 soccer field. On the far end, you have those basketball courts and, and/or pickleball courts, the sport court. You can see the little space here for the gym, and then you can see the, the baseball, the, the lanes for, for, for baseball as well on the near side here. Yeah, we can move on. Just to give you guys a, an idea of what that, that picture can all, can all look like, same thing, that we're, we're back to that one. And then the last piece that I'd like to add to it is the opportunity to also create a stadium here. So there's, I think there should be one more slide, one more set of slides beyond that. Beyond that, here we go. These are actually renderings of, of stadiums, again, with our partners at SFC, that exist right now that they have built in Florida, in Naples, Florida. So we could do this, if you look at that Cloquet Site, if one of those fields could be turned into this as well. So this stadium would obviously allow for other large events to come in outside of the baseball stadium and the baseball events, from, you know, tournaments, high-end tournaments, high-end soccer tournaments, American football, lacrosse, so on and so forth, could all be done out of a stadium like that. The other thing that is currently coming is there is now a USL II soccer team that has just been opened up here in Macomb County. It will begin play this spring. That'll bring seven home games just for that one enterprise this year, and then with a, hopefully, a women's program in the next cycle, that'll bring 14 home games to the city. Right now, we're hoping to run those games out of that, for that particular program out of Swineheart, but if we were to build a stadium like this, all of those things would run here. There are thoughts about maybe expanding that USL II team into a full professional level that would bring X amount more, and we would have to develop this, this, this small stadium a little bit further to make that happen, but those are all phases, they are way further out. So hopefully, I've been able to very quickly and concisely paint a picture of some possibilities for what the Packing Plant property could become, how that can help, obviously, foster all the things that sports brings to this community, to any community, for the kids and for the adults in the area, and how that can also bring a, a very, very large economic impact to the city that's, that's positive in terms of what it brings to all the restaurants downtown. Every, every business benefits from more traffic, so that foot traffic before and after practice every single day of the week, obviously, games on the weekends that happen, and then larger sporting events that could occur with the USL programs that are coming. And those, the USL II program that I just alluded to, that, that is coming here. That's already set, that's already coming. Future things will, will build upon that. So my ask of the council is to just give us a few months of time to look through this, wait for those Phase II developments. And I think another thing we'd like to, I'd like to say about the Phase II environmentals is that in speaking to, to Mayor Gus about this, the head of Eagle was very, very excited about this, turning into, who was doing the Phase II environmentals, about this turning into some sort of a soccer facility or some sort of sports facility, some sort of athletic development, because it fits what can easily be, you know, can, can be, this land can be converted into based on its, its past history. So just wanted to point that out. So if we could, our ask is that we buy at least a few months to see how these, these Phase II's go, and then to work with the city to try to flush this out more thoroughly and to come back and present further developments along this path.
Any questions for G? That's, I call him G.
Yeah, Gronthick translates to G.
Right.
Pretty easily.
For an Italian.
Was it dead on a soccer field, anyway? Long time ago.
Yeah, it's very impressive, but what's your forecast on additional parking that would be needed?
The, the site itself has space for parking, right? There's 32 acres out of, and we're using, you know, roughly like 18 on that particular proposal, so there's, there's quite a bit of space for parking to be added. Again, you know, tailoring it and then also, you know, working with you to think about where other buildings might go, tailoring this whole thing, that, that's part of what I think the next month entails, right? But there is plenty of space just on that land for additional parking, much less, you know, I think there's other folks here tonight, they're going to present on other areas of land within this, within the downtown area, and, you know, I'm, I'm very open to working so that all of these things multiply upon each other. I think that's the key, right, for the city in this downtown, is for everything to have a multiplying fact, effect upon one another, from the baseball helping the soccer and the soccer helping the baseball. It's kind of the age-old, like, business school model, right? If you have McDonald's on one corner, it's counterintuitive to put a Burger King on the other, but then it actually helps both businesses because it becomes the lunch spot. Everybody goes to it. So in a similar fashion, if you have baseball here already and you add these stadiums and you add soccer fields and you just start to add sports to this area, it becomes, it just becomes the hub, and everything starts to flow here, you know? And so we want to work with everyone in the community to make those things happen. Yeah?
So the proposed entrance would be off of Cass, correct? Old Packing Plant driveway? Right? Am I guess right there off, off Ruby?
Yep.
Okay. So, I mean, Cass is a residential street. You're going to have, let's say you have a tournament there, you're going to have 300, 400 cars there, you know, several thousand people there. That's great, and I'm all, and I live on Cass, and I'm all for more is better in a lot of these situations. Just wondering, I think that you'll find your resistance with any one of the communities is going to be traffic.
Fair.
Getting those cars in and out of Cass Avenue.
Fair.
It's hard enough at 7:00 in the morning when I'm backing on my driveway to go to work when there's kids, because I live right by the junior high.
Sure.
So that's where you're going to have to be creative, I think, with understanding what has to happen with traffic, what your proposals are going to be, because that's the challenge, I think. That property has great purpose. You might have the right idea for it, and that's great, and maybe that, and I can't think of a better solution to put there, and I 100% on board with that, but your, your concern's going to be traffic.
Fair.
On a 25 mile per hour historic district residential zone, trying to fit 300, 400 cars in there between 5:00 and 7:00, and the games going on, and then everyone getting out of there and everyone come back in for the next series of games. So just a, just a thought, you know, food for thought, what's going to happen in the future for you there.
I think that's a.
Chaplin as well.
Chaplin, and then maybe even consider a driveway, partner up with our friends at GSE and make friends with Utica Schools and get a driveway going north off of Auburn Road.
I, I think those are all things that have been discussed and we're, need further flushing out and further partnerships, right, with, with the Utica Community Schools, right?
I think it's great. I'm just saying that traffic's a concern, because I know some of those on Ruby, two guys here that live on Cass, some of those right in the backyard there on Brunel, he calls it, Brownell. But, yeah, so just food for thought.
Yeah, I think that's, I think those are great points. I'd love to work with the, with, with Utica Community Schools going forward here on this because this park should be open to all those, all the children that are at, at Epler, right, to be able to go use, considering the fields that they have behind them. This, I think, would be a.
Do you see soccer coming similar to that, like the DCFC games?
That could be a future that we can talk about. Yes, I would love to see that happen here. It would be lovely, but I can't, I can't promise that because I don't have that yet.
I told him not to jump the gun.
Yeah, that's a, that's, that's a little bit down the road, but yes, that would be lovely to, to make something like that happen here in this community. That would be a long-term goal.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for your great presentation. It was very nice.
Cheers.
Any other questions for G. tonight? All right, thank you. There's really nothing to vote on, I don't think.
Okay, just, just to buy time maybe for that land?
Motion to receive.
What's that?
Just to buy time for this land?
Yeah, I don't think that would be a motion.
Okay.
We would need a motion to receive and file these documents.
Yes, sir. Mr. Maram, make a motion to file, receive and file these documents here presented by the, the proposal, the gentleman just.
Motion by Deon.
Support.
Support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura. Yes. Trezey O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deon.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thanks, G.
Thank you very much for your time.
Nice presentation.
Cheers.
Next on the agenda is the phased downtown development.
Hi, my name's Mike Evekow. I spoke here a couple of months ago with regards to this phase.
Hi, my name is Mike Yevkow. I spoke here a couple of months ago with regards to this phased development that we're looking to proceed forward with. We need a one-year contract to do due diligence on all the land. It's a proposal in exchange for moving and constructing new city buildings on the packing plant land. We have revised our LOIs, because we have met with Dana and Andy at GSE. They have put together a lot of intent that they are willing to forego their rights on the gravel lot, under the understanding that we're able to build a parking deck on the land that the city currently, where we're standing at right now. And in doing so, on that back gravel lot, we propose to build a multifamily space as well as a boutique hotel that would draw attraction. I've said this multiple times, you've heard me say it, Utica is kind of like the gateway between the east side and the west side, and I think it'd be a great spot for people to gather, the ballpark. It's a unique theme to, I guess, a smaller downtown area. So we would like to take their circle downtown and merge it with the ballpark. And in order to do so, we have to move the city buildings to the packing plant. I've met with G as well, and with Mayor Gus, trying to brainstorm ideas, how we can all work together to use that, the back parcel. I would ask that the council would give priority to my development, because mine is very costly upfront. I have to build a multimillion-dollar facility for the city. And so therefore, I have to do all these due diligences in order to propose this to my partners and potential investors. And that back piece of land is, could be pretty critical for this whole downtown development to be feasible. And if we sacrifice 20-plus acres of it for a soccer facility in the hopes that it's going to revitalize the downtown area, I think we know from history that that hasn't happened as we have hoped. And with respect to, I mean, that facility, families, there's nowhere to park down here currently. So in order for, to be able to have restaurants that, and parking that can accommodate the families of the soccer facility, there needs to be a parking deck built. Otherwise, those families are going to go to Art and Jake's in Buffalo Wild Rains right on mound, and Hall Road right over there. And frankly, none of the restaurants that are in the downtown area have the seating capacity to accommodate large family gatherings for the most part. I think Mr. Murgill is doing a great job in the renovation, and they would definitely benefit from the demographic that the soccer facility will provide. But, like I said, I'm down to work with the soccer facility. I think 20-plus acres of land is quite ambitious. And maybe not the best use of that property. I think it's a use, a good use. But I think the city needs to think long-term, and fields and a bubble doesn't provide a lot of real estate value. Therefore, provides very low property tax revenue for the city, which my understanding is the city doesn't have a lot of money, so.
Who's telling you that?
It's in the city's best interest to, you know, use all the land that it has to its fullest potential, so that it can generate as much property tax as possible. Which ultimately benefits the residents that live here. So being in the restaurant downtown, we've received a good feedback from residents that have patronized us, and we're very much appreciated for it. I have one gentleman that watches, I don't know, many people watch these videos, but apparently some people do. And he came in and shook my hand and said, thanks for, you know, kind of being a catalyst of seeing more happen in the downtown area. So I hope to do so. And as expressed before, we would like to have a one-year due diligence process to get this rocking forward, and ask for it to be a priority. So do we have any questions? I guess one thing to add, if you want, if I have a second. I think Epler School or the junior high, it would be a great spot to have a multipurpose sports facility fields. I mean, that area is not, is not the best representation of what the fields could be over there, and somewhat hazardous in a way. And if we could work with Utica Community Schools to accommodate G's sports facility on some of that land, I think, and find a way that we could marry their schedules along with the sports schedule, I think that would be a better use as opposed to using all the packing plant land for sports facility. So that's all I have to say at the moment.
Mayor and council, just to bring your attention, there was a letter of intent that was submitted in the packet here today. When there's talk about there being a 365 due diligence period, I just want to let you guys know, because I think a couple of months ago, we thought it was, well, it was non-binding on either party during that one year. But this letter of intent states that the parties agree that the developer shall have a period of 15 days from the city's acceptance of this letter to present the city with a formal offer to purchase, which embodies the foregoing terms. Once we sign that, which this is talking about us receiving in 15 days, that is binding on the city to complete that sale. What happens then is the developer gets 365 days to do their due diligence, their testing and everything, and bring back their proposal at that time. At any time during that year, they can back out of the purchase agreement. The city cannot. That's not atypical. It is a little bit longer of a due diligence period, but because of the environmental and whatnot, you know, it's not unusual. But I do want council to be aware what the city would be getting into if they do approve that letter of intent.
And the $10,000 deposit, that is refundable if, for whatever reason, you can't proceed with the project, right?
It is.
Yes, as is written, yes. I, the letter of intent, the whole purpose is kind of be like a starting point for a purchase agreement. It's going to be very difficult to proceed on spending tens, thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars during this due diligence period, and not have the sole right to complete the purchase at the conclusion of this due diligence period. It's pretty standard practice. We did the same exact thing when we purchased the current building that we're in. We presented a letter of intent, they basically outlined our thoughts of what we would like to be put in a purchase agreement, that we put the purchase agreement in place. We had a due diligence period. On that building alone, we had 90 days, which is three months, which is significantly less footprint and less of a headache than it would be on the multiple parcels that we have that we're presenting to you guys right now.
And I don't disagree with Mr. Yevkow's characterization, that you do a purchase agreement with a due diligence. I just wanted to make sure council knew, because when we were here last time on this topic, council thought that Utica could back out during that 365 days, was my impression, and that would not be the case under this.
I can't spend tens of hundred thousand dollars with no guarantee.
I'm not saying for or against it, just so you know. I just need to make sure council knows what they're voting on.
I need developer or individual is not going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for the city to be able to back out at will.
My only concern, and I know you have a great plan, my only concern is that if we tie it up for a year, and then it doesn't work for you, we've lost a year of probability or an opportunity to look at another, another buyer for that, correct? No, I'm sure I understand that properly, okay. Yeah, I think that, I think that without great risk, there's not great rewards. I think that this might be, you know, something that's kind of interesting, for sure. We've talked about this exact concept, that parcel, till we're all blue in the face. We've had this pie in the sky idea since, well, since the previous administration prior, 2016 and prior, it was not there. But after that, this idea's been very popular.
Yep. I mean, one year's minimal in comparison to the seven to 10 years that Jamie Johns has had on the parcels that they have control over right now. And at one year, if I, I mean, worst case scenario, it's not feasible. There's not many other pieces of land that you can build a soccer field facility on like that. And like I said, I want to work with, I want to work with them long in this process as well, see how we can both use this land, but the priority has to be to the development in order to make this fiscally responsible and feasible. And ultimately, if that land could be used to build permanent buildings on, that's more real estate value, and that's more property tax for City Utica, which is, I believe, the ultimate goal.
I wish we could say that everything could happen, your project, that project, everything come together. There are two very distinct visions or futures for the city of Utica.
We've kind of already done the one version of it already, though.
Yeah, I understand.
Here's my, here's my fear. It's been my fear all along, so hopefully I'm being consistent. I've always envisioned residential back there, right? Mixed-use residential condominiums, whatever. And I've spent the last four, almost four years now, pushing that idea, talking to multiple developers, and hoping that that's what could happen, for the very reason you mentioned, right? Property tax revenue. That's where the city would most benefit. The other half of that was increasing our density, our residential density around the downtown would help our downtown businesses, right? So that's always been my goal. I finally turned in my residential card to the Eagle people, because they have pretty much hammered me as a man. They have made me come to terms with the reality that we probably are never going to get any grant money to remediate that packing plant if it is for residential development. So my fear is, if we, I think pre-due diligence, right, before we even get into the due diligence, I think we need to have meetings with you and Eagle so that they can talk to you and see if there's any, you know, I'm not a developer, I don't build houses for a living. I think you and Eagle, somebody from Eagle, before we can even enter into an agreement, should talk. Try to find out what feasible things could happen at that, and maybe there, you know, you have a different angle that you'll be able to present to them. But in all my conversations, they've not been receptive to residential back there.
They've done it before. I've shared with you. They did it in Lansing. They built, Eagle provided grant money to build basically a similar type concept. I know they said no residential as of right now, but if you do first-floor retail, commercial, and they build residential on top of it, which a lot of places do now, especially downtown facilities, I don't see, foresee it being an issue. It's called the Capital City Market in Lansing. They have first-floor grocery store, which is another thing that I believe this area really needs. We have all these. I'm a restaurateur. We don't, we always have to run out to grab stuff. My only option is all these. Otherwise, I have to go drive all the way down to Gordon's, Costco, Meyer's, Kroger's, which is in the most inconvenient direction to go as a restaurateur. So if we could do a Meyer Fresh Fair, like those boutique Meyer's that they do, they just built one on 24 and Hayes, and do a first-floor grocery store over there, I think it would be a win-win for the community that everybody would appreciate, and on top, you build your residential pieces.
You know, one-on-one conversation with my person at Eagle, I brought that up, and her advice was, it probably can't happen. Even residential on a second floor. She said there might be some ways to do it, but again, I think that's why, before we enter into agreements, I think you need to sit down with the Eagle folks and have these discussions, rather than me trying to interpret it, because, you know, there might be, you may have a better way of, you know, presenting the facts, or it might spur some different thoughts about possibilities. But it's, it's just been a, just hitting the wall when I try to communicate.
Yeah, we mentioned that. I just, didn't make sense, because it's, it's part of what they've already done. So the fact is.
They told me the rules are actually, in the next year, going to get even stricter now.
Stricter for grant funding, or stricter just like, if we want to privately, you know, remedy the situation so we can build on it, and we don't use the Eagle funding, then do they have any, any assistance in that?
It's not grant funding, whether or not there's grants available, it just has to do with compliance and monitoring. So the monitoring over periods of time are much longer for residential units. And the restrictions and requirements are just much higher for brownfield remediation, because people are going to be living there all the time versus a commercial use where you're having many people come and go. So, I mean, I think it's definitely worth discussions, but there is just a much higher amount of restrictions and requirements and monitoring and compliance when it comes to residential, obviously.
And it puts, you know, old cities like ours in a hard position, because what do we do with these properties, you know, that have been sitting vacant and, you know, totally blighting our community for decades, you know?
The one new change to legislation is they do now allow for brownfield tax increment financing to be used towards residential developments. So that is new. So you could do tax capture for reimbursement for brownfield cleanups for residential, which is actually a new addition to the legislation. But I manage the Macomb County Brownfields Authority, so I definitely think we should have a conversation offline as well about these properties, because all of these properties are going to need Phase 1 and Phase 2 site assessments, even this property, you know, before any sort of movement would take place. Which, you know, you never know what something like that is going to unveil as well. So I think there's a lot of due diligence that needs to take place.
That's what I'm trying to get going.
Before the due diligence, because we may get to a point where it's just not going to, and you may get to that point where you're right, we just can't do this. And then we've locked ourselves, you know, out for other potential developments. I don't think we need a lot of time, but I think, I think some conversations with Eagle and maybe Amanda's office for brownfield redevelopment opportunities. I think for the city to be, enter into something responsibly, I think we need to at least have some of those conversations, I really do. I know it's probably not what you want to hear tonight.
I mean, we've been talking about this for three months, and these conversations have.
But, but you're still talking about putting residential there.
I'm just trying to find a solution to it.
Right, but I think we need to have a good idea of what that solution is before we lock down our property for a year. That, and it becomes binding to us, and then if you decide that it doesn't work for you, we don't even have the $10,000 anymore.
If you want the $10,000, I'll make it non.
No, I mean, that's kind of a token amount, but what I'm saying is, all the risk is on us at this point, where if we just wait a month, maybe two months, we have the correct conversations with the brownfield folks, with Eagle folks, and we find out the Phase 2s should be completed by then. I just got another email today that, for some final paperwork before they actually go in and do it, from the, what would it be, the vendor?
The architect.
The testing.
The consultant.
The consultant. So this paperwork came from the consultant. So this is the last step, right? When I signed off on this, that means they are good to go. We've already signed up everything for Eagle. So we've got testing that's pretty much in progress. We should have results for fairly soon. And I think we have conversations that we need to have with Eagle and maybe Macomb County Planning to talk about brownfield opportunities. I think that, that is the pre-due diligence. I mean, that may get you enough information to even be able to flesh out, you know, what's really possible there, before we even get into this.
And doing so becomes public knowledge, and then you're going to have every, every developer in the area that doesn't care about the city of Utica to come in here and wants to bid on that project now. I'm coming ahead of time, willing to take the risks and moving forward.
That property's been sitting there for.
Since 64.
Since 64. So I don't think it's, I don't, there's not a long line, because trust me, I would know.
We express, you meet with developers every two weeks about this property.
And I meet with them once.
But nobody wants to do anything with it until the Phase 2 is done. So now this Phase 2 is going to be done, this is going to be public knowledge, and now you're going to have every Italian builder in the area wanting to be a part of it.
No, they're not, because the Phase 2 is going to tell us something that I don't think we want to hear, because we had a partial Phase 2, and it didn't really tell us what we wanted to hear, that there's a lot of dirt there. I mean, that's what I think is, we're going to hear. But we don't know. And again, we have to be responsible. We have to make decisions that are going to be best for the city. And the argument that every, you know, if every developer was lining out the door to give, to bid up that property, it might not be what you want, but our taxpayers would want that, right? That would be the responsible thing to do for our taxpayers, is market that property at the highest value we can. So I don't see that really being the scenario that's going to happen. Again, it's been sitting there since 1960. Again, it's been sitting there since 1960, whatever. Phase twos are not gonna change that because they're gonna come back and tell us it's pretty dirty. Uh, you know, the parcels, I think, had 20 feet of, of dirt there in the areas that were tested.
So is the city making on grant funding to make this a marketable property? Because what if someone privately cleans that property?
You know, we don't actually have a motion on the table at all. There's not been a motion made or a second.
Yeah, we're deliberating.
Considerable deliberation.
Yeah, can we get a motion on the floor?
What should that motion be?
You're on council, Utah.
You could motion to, one option would be to approve the letter of intent. One option would be to table so that there could be additional, um, conversations.
I'll make that motion.
Any other motion that you want to make.
I'll make that motion to table it and discuss it further.
I support it.
Motion by Robinson, support by Sikora. Now, is there any additional deliberation?
I, I think with this idea of the phase two coming through, that's gonna benefit you ultimately in the end. And I, I personally believe from your standpoint, there aren't too many people that are gonna want to pull off the project that you want to pull off, that are ever gonna be willing to. And you already have an investment in this town and I thank you for that, okay? I truly, truly do. You've brought a whole unique concept in that to, to Utica. So I, I look at that as, that's already a, a very big plus in your favor. But I think your vision of what you want to do, relocate buildings, all of that, that is not something... Somebody may want to look at that parcel and say, eventually, okay, I want to do it. But you're talking again, opening this up, moving this out, doing things. You've already talked to GSC. You've got an understanding with them now. I don't think anybody else is gonna do this, so waiting a month or that to maybe get this done at our cost is gonna benefit you.
And Michael talking about like doing it privately, quite honestly, the amount of money that you need to spend there in residential, but you, your price point return on that would probably be like crazy ridiculous. Like you'd be spending millions per acre to, or whatever the number is, it's a ridiculous number. I don't think that you'll find that return in residential. I've, I've worked in real estate for 25 years. I've been a real estate appraiser and a Realtor. Like I tell you, I see people get into brownfield projects and they talk about private money and that money is never returned so that money has to be passed on to the buyer of the home, which is, Utica's not, Utica's not a $500,000 neighborhood yet. Now, slightly just north of that, that development just north across from the American Legion home, those are $500,000 houses, but I don't think you find people moving into Utica to buy new construction at $500,000 for a residential, non-Washington, Washington Township style lot. You know, we're not, you're not gonna get an acre lot, and I don't see people buying a, you know-
This is not to build like, single-family homes. This is multi-family. This is to build a downtown environment. I'm not looking to build a subdivision.
Yeah, I get that too, but you're gonna, you're gonna need great density to make up the difference than what you'd spend privately.
I, I don't think it hurts anybody. I, I don't know how long this is going to take to get this done by the, the consultant, okay?
They keep telling me it's gonna start any day and that it will go fast, like a week. It's not, it's not a long process, but, I mean, I've been hearing that since around Christmas time, I think it was, wasn't it Mike?
I would just say, don't, don't, don't give up.
I've worked, I've worked for governments. It's a very slow process, so.
Just don't give up on this idea. I mean, there's people that have ideas and they talk about it and they go away. You've not gone away. I say that, wait for the phase two to come back, do your due diligence thereafter. And then when you have all of your pieces together, then I think you keep coming, keep coming back though, because I-
It doesn't necessarily have to be just residential either. I'm just saying like, I need, I need the time to figure out how we can maximize that property to its fullest value. I think the easy way out would be to do another sports facility. I think that, that property deserves a lot more.
I don't think the sports group that we talked to earlier, I don't think they're ready to make a move here in 30 days either. They're gonna get the same scrutiny when they come to us to sign something, right? Uh, and their ducks will have to be in row as well, you know? We'll have to be at a point where city council thinks we're in a position to commit to the project. So, I mean, I don't see that being a quick turnkey thing either.
I mean, I can't speak for what anybody else will do, but I can say personally to you in a public forum that you will have the exact opportunity you have now with me to present versus the sports facility to do that. I want to see what you have. As I just told you, you already have an investment here, okay? So, again, waiting to get this, this report done to see what it's, what's really in that, that is, is really part of you, your due diligence. Do you want to do it on your own or do you want something that is gonna be done?
And the truth is, Mike, if we gotta develop, you know, if you, if this line of developers starts forming, it's very unlikely they're gonna have the scope of project that you're contemplating, right? You're, you're looking at all of downtown. You're looking at all, you know, I may get a-
May get Dan Gilbert to show up and be, do it all over.
That's about what, uh, the level of what you're, what you're proposing. I mean, it really is. So that's very unlikely that somebody's gonna come in with an overarching plan like you have.
So should we call Michael the Dan Gilbert of Utica?
All right, I think, uh, are any more questions for Mike or any more deliberation necessary? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terencey. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Mike, we don't want to throw cold water on you. Your energy-
I, I ran the airport to get here for this. I cut my Cancun vacation short, which is a depress- Got sunburned, no.
All right, thanks guys.
And ladies and everyone, appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is a resolution in opposition of proposed water affordability legislation brought forth by Mayor Protem Ken Sikora.
Members of the state legislature, a member or members have brought forth a bill that would want to tax every water meter in every home a minimum or a starting fee of $24 per year, $2 a month, with the ability to raise it to $3 a month, which is $36, um, a year, um, across the state. With the idea that this is supposed to help people with the water bills and all, but it doesn't specify who's gonna get it. And it's really been deemed a, the City of Detroit and their residents are gonna give us money. The upsetting part is in Macomb County, we have the RAP program that already does this. It helps people out. We fund our own people within Macomb County. So why should we be subsidizing the rest of the state or specifically one city with these funds? The person that brought this bill to the floor is a representative from the City of Detroit. Candace Miller has been extremely vocal. Um, our Macomb County Commissioner, our-
Public Works Commissioner.
Public Works Commissioner has been extremely vocal in writing, on, in the news, on radio against this because we already do what they're asking us to do, actually mandating us to do. I have two water meters, okay? So that could be up to $72 a year like that, okay? And if it's up to 36 now, they'll just vote it again and take it higher when they want more money. So, um, up to this point, many, many communities in, in, um, Macomb County have signed resolutions against that. Uh, I had asked the mayor if we could also join that list and growing list to oppose this. And again, there's strength in numbers. We have in the Macomb County area a, a huge amount of people that would be paying that water bill, so. The mayor had put together a resolution, um, that I was able to read in advance and I, I strongly asked this council on behalf of not only, um, our residents, which again, if you remember, we're digging ourselves out of our own water bill solution. So our residents, our, uh, solution, our own problem that was created. Um, so we are already paying higher water bills on top of it. To add another 24 to 36 dollars a year, it doesn't seem much. But we have an older community, a lot of people, that 24, 36 dollars means, what can I buy or what can't I buy, okay? Uh, it does not affect people on separate systems, so that's really not even universal as far as who's gonna pay it or not. It's targeting, um, people with a water meter. So, um, I had asked, like I say, Utica to join it. Uh, if you've read it, hopefully you agree with me. But it's just another tax that are lumped on us that we're never gonna see a dime for.
Let's get a motion on the floor.
I make a motion to adopt this 2024 resolution, uh, stating resolution to oppose, oppose water, uh, water affordability legislation.
Motion by Sikora.
Support.
Support by Ryan. When Mayor Protem Sikora brought this up, uh, I became curious. I was like, well, how many Utica residents are using? Because we keep hearing the argument is, we already have RAP, W-R-A-P. We already have that program that helps, uh, Utica residents. So it should be pretty easy to figure out how many Utica residents are receiving RAP assistance or have applied for RAP assistance. That's three. So, we're paying all this money into RAP and there's only three Utica residents that are benefiting from it. As Mayor Protem Sikora said, our residents are burdened with the high water, uh, charges based on some mistakes made by, you know, in the past by their govern, government. I don't want to make another mistake. I don't want to overburden them. And that's why I would support, uh, opposing this new water affordability legislation. It seems redundant. We already have a program and it, and at least as far as Utica goes, and that's the data I have, it's very underutilized already. Any other?
Would it have teeth, though? I mean-
Well, like, we don't know.
I mean, it just, Ken, how many other communities are opposing this?
Uh, there are already in Macomb County. I quit county after 20. I mean, you're talking the big boys, Sterling Heights, that, people with population. Now, again, you're talking the whole state legislature, but I think when this gets out there and the more teeth we put to it, okay, the rest of the people are gonna say, wait a second, maybe this isn't such a good idea. I mean, and I don't want to, to pick on Detroit. You know, the state of Michigan already bailed out the City of Detroit, $750 million when they had all their other bankruptcy problems. Then we bailed out the school district of the City of Detroit for another $750 million. That's a billion and a half we already did, and this is where this is all gonna go, plain and simple, for now and perpetuity, so.
You know what this almost seems like? We just had this discussion over the Highland Park.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is, this seems like since the gals shut, got shut down, that we weren't paying a Highland Parks bill. This is just another way for us to still pay Highland Parks bill.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's it, no.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terencey. O'Donnell.
No.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. I will get this printed on fancy paper and sent off to our state government. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda. Uh, man, that's you.
Uh, so Mayor and Council, if you recall, approximately two, three years ago, the deputy city clerk and the deputy city treasurer at that time had, um, contacted ASME and asked to join the ASME local that our DPW is in. That did indeed happen shortly, actually before it happened, the deputy city clerk left employment here and that, that position was no longer filled like that, so that was not a union position. Now, so now there's only one, one clerical position in that union of all DPW employees. The, uh, local, the DPW local and ASME have approached me and said they want to separate that person out of their union. The current deputy treasurer has indicated she does not want to be a union member. I want to make it very clear, the city has not instigated this at all. This is coming from the union. This is what the union has asked for and this is what the employees asked for. So, um, it's apparent that the deputy treasurer is also currently, um, going to be taking another job elsewhere and we need a post for this, and we don't know if it's gonna be a union position or a non-union position at this time. So ASME drafted the documentation in here that would remove that position from being a part of their union.
So you would be looking for a motion?
I look for a motion for council to do what council wants to do, whether they want to approve ASME's request to remove that position from their union or if they want to disprove it.
I will make a motion to approve ASME's request to remove this position from the union.
Motion by Sikora. Did everyone hear that? Support by Calendrino. Any deliberation?
Do we know why? They don't want this position in the union?
I don't think it matters really, yeah.
They just don't really have common grounds in their negotiations because you have all the DPW employees in it. You know, they're all over there. They do something totally different, and then you have one clerical position in City Hall.
But we had two, but-
We had two when it was started, but then that position moved to a different part-time arrangement.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, based on, this is again, not something we initiated.
No.
Not something we're asking for or, or have asked for outwardly. It is actually doing what the bargaining unit of the DPW and the current deputy treasurer is asking to do, so I think-
I mean, I don't even know if we could refuse this, could we? Deny this? I mean, you know, we're forcing our employees to be in your union. I don't even know if we could deny this.
We, we could not agree to this and-
We could not agree to it, but-
And then they could seek whatever alternative remedies they have to make that happen.
Right.
I think this just heads it off at the pass.
Yep. Any further deliberation? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terencey. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, and this one ought to go real quick.
I love your optimism, Gus.
Is the revised marijuana business ordinance presented tonight by Mr. Keasy or his representative?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Justin Danaskis here with Danaskis Consulting Development, 900 South LaPierre, Oxford, along with the applicant Marvin Keasy, um, address for the record, sorry.
3664 Piccadilly Drive, Rochester, Michigan.
Thank you. Really appreciate you guys considering our request tonight for the adoption of this revised marijuana business ordinance that's in front of you tonight. The ordinance that's in front of you really stems from years of discussions, really in these chambers, on cannabis policy, the history of the current licenses that operate within your city, comments from citizens, industry stakeholders, some of the support you heard tonight. And really kinda encompasses also the drafts that this council has brought forth over the last 10 months or so. And so we're really proud of this work product. We really think we kinda captured all those different stakeholders' thoughts and ideas with the ordinance that's in front of you tonight, as well as give further enhancements to the city, protections to the residents, and adding some additional license types that really have been discussed and I think just haven't been fully ironed out. And I think now with this current draft does that, so the city can kinda move forward with this current chapter and move forward with, uh, some additional license types now that you've had the opportunity, the history of your current operators in seeing that, okay, now, based on all this feedback, I think we have what we need to move forward to satisfy desires of the community, industry stakeholders, again, while also providing some enhancements to the ordinance, given it really has been some time since the original one. A number of things have happened to kinda bring that, you know, into line as well. And so I want to first start by just kinda giving you an overview of the main amendments that you'll see or you've read in the packet in the ordinance that's been presented. Uh, just so we have a kinda clear grasp of those. And then, of course, want to answer any questions, comments, Marvin as well as make himself available so we can make sure that everything's addressed and hopefully can move forward with, again, this request, hopefully adopt this ordinance. And so first, we gotta look at the new licenses that are being added, which really should come no surprise. The discussion's been had and so forth. We look at it and the city already has marijuana retailers, provision center, co-located growers. And so the next license type, kinda missing cog in the chain is a processor. So that's one license that will look to be added. We talked about those before. They make the infused products, be it a very complex process for concentrates or a simpler form with, um, not using a hydrocarbon extraction or just doing things like infusing joints or packaging and distribution. That's kinda the missing cog between, you know, growing it, selling it, enables that license type and those jobs and community benefits by enabling that license. The additional license types that we're looking to add would be the designated consumption lounge. Uh, it's relatively newer license type that came under adult use, if you recall, and allows those 21 up to consume. We have places that sell it. We have places that grow it, and maybe places that process it, hopefully. Well, there should be places for those to consume it. Well, there should be places for those to consume it outside of private residences and private events. And so it's a relatively newer license type, but I've had the pleasure of working with a few of the licenses. And it was only a few in the state. I can confidently tell you that they're very highly regulated, a great concept that needs some nurturing that's going to develop. We'll see more of them. It's been talked about here and we'll talk about in a minute the designated area for these new licenses. I think it couples very well and just, you know, lends itself to allowing that additional license type of the consumption lounge. The third license that we look to add and has been talked about is an additional retailer license, marijuana retailer, which would co-locate with a provision center. So medical marijuana provision center license like you have now would then also have the ability to co-locate with your marijuana retailer license, just like the two existing operating facilities that you have. And so by adding these three license types, you know, this again was based on what we've heard in the past from the citizens, the council, as well as looking at other similar communities of your size and across, as they look to add different license types, how many and so forth, very much in line, we'll go over that a little more as you look at communities like New Baltimore, Orion, the Village of or the Township, Auburn Hills. You look at these communities, Auburn Hills, much larger, they allow four licenses. The Village of Orion, two licenses. New Baltimore, three retail licenses and so forth. Thing is very appropriate and what's in line with being discussed of adding these licenses and these types. And we look at the area we're proposing for these additional licenses. It's kind of natural and could really come from no surprise on the east side of the city now versus the west side where you have the existing retailers and growers. Now looking at, you know, things like ingress egress, why we chose the east side over on Park Avenue and specifically any parcels that are contiguous with that Park Avenue Ring Road that kind of connects to Utica Park Boulevard, any parcel that is contiguous with that would be eligible for one of these license types. And again, no surprise why that area was chosen. You have the proximity of the hotels, the entertainment, the shopping, right? Really fits in line with all those license types as well as ingress egress, M 59, Van Dyke and so forth. And so that is why that area was specifically chosen and outlined for where those new license types would be allocated. We also had some enhancements to the applications and your requirements to make sure that's what's being provided to you. It's been some time since the original ordinance was adopted, to further enhancement. So things like proof of funds. They're going to say they have money to build one of these facilities. Well, is it just a number on paper? Or they, you know, do you have proof of those funds? We're going to run this business on this sort of a business model where those, you know, numbers attested to CPA. That's what these enhancements would call for. So proof of funds, CPA attested financials and other little updates like, this was mainly drafted when you first only had the medical. And so things like a pre-qualification or that you're operating under the MRTMA or the adult use. So you'll see and probably picked up on a few of those little tweaks and changes to those requirements for the applicants when they apply. And also when you look at actually the applying for these licenses and so forth, it gives further latitude enhancements for this council. It gives you the opportunity to choose the person or people who are going to score the applications versus being delegated, and I'll use the word forced down originally, to make it the clerk. Not say you shouldn't do a great job or could do it again, you could appoint her, but it gives you that flexibility to choose who's going to score them. It also gives you the opportunity to come up with a scoring, this council. You can delegate based on the factors, criteria in there and others that you deem fit as to the points criteria and really what makes sense for the city of Utica and based on what you've seen in the past and so forth. And so it also doesn't put a gun to your head in the sense of the timeframe for the application window like we saw before in the mad race, as well when those applications would first have to be accepted. So now the council can set, okay, here's when we're actually even going to set and start taking applications as well as how long that window is going to be. And so those were some of the main points on the first area that we wanted to include and make those, you know, enhancements. And we further looked at and give guidance for the factors that should be considered for licensure and their guiding factors. And we made some further enhancements based on feedback, what we've seen and you've heard tonight, too, things like sufficient parking. We've seen that for this use and others that, you know, parking is, you know, critical. And so there's further enhancements like that. How can we encourage those to not displace existing businesses? How can we attract new investment into properties to remove things like blight? And how can we further enhance the character of the community? And also make sure that those that are applying, that the things that are in their staffing plan, their business plan, really directly come back and benefit the community in the city here in Utica. And those are really just learning from the past experiences, seeing what other communities have done. And the nice thing is, again, it gives the city latitude to kind of come up with that criteria as well as build a corresponding scoring rubric. So the city council will adopt or can adopt a scoring rubric to further guide the people or persons that are chosen to go ahead and score these new license types. It also further gives some protections to the city and gives some assurances. One of the enhancements and amendments you saw in there, hopefully, was that current licensees or future ones could have their license revoked if they're not living up to what is in, they put forth in their application, be it in their site plan or other plans, you know, just like if you go buy a car from your local dealership, you're the Mach-E Mustang and they give you the Ford Fusion, well, it's a car. It's not the car I ordered. So you got to make sure there's some criteria and some clawback from the city. And that's why we also made some amendments for things like how you treat a revoke or a suspension of a license to give further detail for the city and licensees, understanding what those processes are going to be. And so we really hope that, you know, you see that all these things are incorporated from the discussions that have been had in these chambers, the last drafts we saw that were kind of derived from the council, that we kind of incorporated those and gave this council more protection, more latitude to decide. And I think really, as you even heard tonight from other industry stakeholders, what not only they, but the citizens are looking for to kind of move that next chapter with a few additional license types and some guiding criteria around that. And so that's why I really hope you consider adopting the ordinance as we think it's a great product and really satisfies and meets the objectives that we've, you know, heard on this policy. Thank you. And then myself and Marvin here, of course, for any and all questions, for your squad or otherwise, and hopefully answer anything for you.
I've got a question. We heard from gentlemen in probably every corner of the room. I don't know if that was how that happened, but it happened, that we shouldn't adopt one more license. We should adopt two more licenses. Why would you say that is not a good idea for the city of Utica?
Well, first, we came up with one derived by what we've heard in the feedback, kind of since day one, what's been put forth by independent citizens group to add one additional license type, what folks and community members in this, every main discussions I've had has called for one. Tonight, there was more calls for two. So it's based on, again, what we've heard, what's been called for, and then I think keeps in line with what we saw in other communities of this size or nature, where when they looked to add one, even Madison Heights went from two to, or two to three. The Village of Orion kept it at two and they looked to add one and they still don't have the other one.
I'm sorry, who was the last?
I'm sorry, the Village of Orion has two. And we look on the east side, I was involved with New Baltimore. They had three and they're keeping it at three retail locations specifically. So kind of keeping in line, looking at other communities of this size as well as kind of direct feedback from we heard. I mean, more can always be added later and so forth. Our thought was one of each of these license type initially, based on the feedback. And again, there's nothing binding you from, you know, adding other licenses further down, but given that's what we've kind of heard along the years and that was kind of the talk, we're going to add one more marijuana retail license. That's why we kept it consistent with those other two license types of just one right now. And again, looking at these other communities, kind of also derived at that one number.
Does anyone else on council have questions?
We have to make a motion to discuss or?
Well, I think we can ask him a question, but when we begin deliberating between ourselves, we should have a motion on the table. I think he's. He looks like he has a question.
No, I think I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, if there's no further questions. Based on the request here, they're looking for a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the ordinance as proposed.
Motion by Deion?
I'll support.
Support by Robinson. Now we can deliberate. Any comments from council? Any discussion?
So adopting this, let's say this happens, this goes forth, things work out great. We like, the city likes the concept. There could be, further down the road, is Mr. Danaskis correct?
Yes, thank you.
Was saying there could be potential for a second one should this process want to repeat. So another person come forward, another entity come forward to create the exact same process that you're doing now. That could happen. This doesn't tie us into a particular one-time deal. All right. You're saying that could, the process could repeat.
Sure. The ordinance can always be amended, added or what have, yeah.
Any feedback for that? City attorney?
I mean legally, you could do that. One place would be established before the other if that happens.
Understood. Because we were two, we're considering three, and at some point or another, this doesn't stop us from, we figure this is a great.
Well, even, I think even council could.
Yeah.
Vote to amend it.
Counsel, yeah. Counsel could amend it, too. Okay. Just want to make sure I have an understanding of it.
Just to clarify that even.
This isn't just giving another retail establishment. This is giving two other phases of.
It's also giving processing and consumption.
Consumption. I'm thinking of how to word something.
Take your time. I've got all the time.
Oh, no. With the de-processing, because I'm not familiar with that. I am driven by some of the other buildings, grow facilities and that, and I hate the smell of pot when I drive by. I despise it. It's not my choice. Whether I smoke or don't smoke, that's my choice if I do it in my house. But at what point with this processing center or even your consumption center, can you put in air purifier or something? We did it with the pig plant. Well, we just talked about the packing plant. They had to actually have put air scrubbers in to take the smell out. Is that something that we as council can mandate into this? Or if this gets voted on, this is where it's at because we weren't specific enough?
It's got to go through a site plan and.
Yeah, I think that's more of like a plan.
For planning.
Yeah.
We can make that a department.
Just asking.
Well, you could also add that to the scoring criteria, the strength of whatever plan they're proposing.
I, you know, you talked about some of these other communities, small communities, some of them kept them at two, some are keeping them at three. We're no bigger than these other communities. So I, very much so, I'm not the biggest lover of adding another retail facility. I'm not big on adding the other one. Utica, if from the very beginning was a very easy mark, because it was very easy to get signatures and then put it on the ballot. And there were petitioners out there talking about it that did not tell the residents exactly what was true. And some of it went through and some of it didn't. Didn't mean that person got the license, but it happened. So again, because we are always an easy mark, that's how this all started. And then when they went back again, and I'm just almost thinking that we're, again, this tiny community, they can't, it has a limited ability to really say what we want. So.
Yeah, I think that the idea of the area that they're looking at is an attractive idea right now because we're looking at this gentleman here. He said his business, are you the gentleman that worked with, Jimmy Gift's office?
Yes.
We have, we have businesses leaving that area. We've had businesses struggling to maintain over there. Now we have someone wants to maybe move in that area. It seems like it's, I don't know if it's ideal, but I think that when you have vacant buildings is a bad thing for our community. So I like the idea, I like the idea of growth. I like the idea of people bringing business ideas in, you know, and I see where some of these places, big box stores have diversified, became something else. You know, when what was Snickers used to be at Ollie's or whatever it's called, now they've changed. So we used to have this thriving.
Ollie's used to be Snickers, you mean?
Yeah, we used to have this little thriving area. Now we're changing, but I still don't want to see, I want to see growth. I want to see maintain.
I understand. I'm concerned about what we fill those empty buildings with. That's my concern, not that they're empty. Not that I don't want them filled.
Yeah.
Okay. But I want the ability to decide, is that really how I want to fill?
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, we don't get to pick and choose the route which commerce, well, in this case we do. But should one of those buildings be vacant, they want to put a auto supply store in there or they want to put a new dance store in there or they want to build, you know, a Lego store, I mean, whatever. Retail's retail, whatever fits the bill, as long as it fits the zone, it goes in there. If it fits, it ships. Unless this particular case. But I'd like, I'm for building, I think more is better. Rather than see vacant buildings and see thrive, I'd rather see thriving businesses.
Councilman O'Donnell?
I feel as though I really just learned, so, you know, what was in the packet. I was trying to sort of parse out, was there an area where it was like, hey, this is like what, essentially what's getting amended? Because I feel like I'm learning most of what is going to change right now, which means I am very not, very much not prepared to vote on it. I don't know how the residents are going to react who live right there. And I don't know, frankly, you know, we've got lots of lawyers and lobbyists in this room right now. I don't know if there's anti-competitive language that's in here that maybe I missed. I don't know. I'm not prepared to vote on this.
Well, the packet was published to the public on Friday and sent to all council members, I believe, Friday afternoon.
Right.
I mean, that was the period of time to, you know, review it and ask the questions. I mean, here we are.
Sure, but there's multiple pages and it was never denoted. Oh, this is why this, we're changing this here, this here, this here. It just, okay, here's a, you know, 20 page bit. Sure, I read the whole thing. Okay, now I know. What, how is it different from what we have? Where is the vision of where we're going?
Yeah, Linda, is, how's, that's a great point, is how's different is it worded than the previous versions that we?
I mean, Mr. Danaskis did present a redline version comparing the original ordinance to the ordinance he's proposing. I didn't see if that was in council packet or not.
No.
He didn't add it.
No.
It's just if I were to ask, all the attorneys raise their hands. There's a lot.
Be a lot of hands raised.
A lot of hands raised.
Than me. I'm not an attorney. Okay? I'm a glass man.
He's a business owner.
And I don't want to kick it down the can either, but I definitely feel, I got more information tonight. And again, everybody wants this license. That's why you're all here. You're proposing this, you want it, you want it, you want it, you, whoever, everybody wants this. And no, no offense to Marvin. Marvin, you've been great to the city. You wrote this ordinance to help benefit you. So.
Absolutely. But also the people that came up here to speak are all representing the same company. So you got eight people here representing one company.
I don't know that.
Just saying.
So it's a matter of, okay, if they're all representing one company, then there really is no competition.
I'm a third, so.
Okay.
I'm not with anybody who's going to be a third competitor. All I'm saying is that you're restricting it to one. What's the problem with having two or three?
We can't, we really can't open the floor anymore.
Follow that, Scott.
Yeah, it was written so you guys can discuss further after the fact.
And just so it's known, any council member who wants a redline, you know, who wants a copy of the original to compare it to anything being proposed, all you got to do is ask, right? I mean, that's, that's what we're here for. So, I mean, that could have been provided. I don't, you know, I guess it is what it is at this point, though. Well, I think it's time to vote. We've got a motion, got a support. Is there any further discussion before we do the vote?
Is the motion still just to adopt the.
Adopt the ordinance.
As.
As presented.
As presented.
Or one, she doesn't have the floor. Quiet, please. Point of order.
And I told him, didn't I?
He going to close?
Well, there's, there's a motion on the table. You certainly could do some sort of work session or call another meeting, encourage more input on it, if that's what you wanted to do. But for now, there's currently a motion on the table. I believe it was seconded. So unless the maker and the second wants to withdraw that motion in the seconding or there's some amendment that both the maker and the second agrees to, that ultimately that motion would need to be resolved before any other motion could be made.
We're still in discussion, right?
Yeah. The motion was by Deion and support was by Robinson, I believe. Is that right? Based on Linda's information, are you both happy with your actions?
We can't fault the rest of the class for not doing their homework. If I ask, I mean, if you had, and if you were involved in the first ordinance and you took the time to read it and vote on it and you did any correlation with the, with the new ordinance, then you should have found yourself. and you did any correlation with the new ordinance, then you should have found yourself in the know, quite honestly. I think that's a fair point. Everyone's done their part to bring it forward to this point. We've had our attorney work on it for a while. You've done your portion, the presenter's done theirs. I think that we're in a position to go ahead and go forth with it. I'm not unagreeable to allowing further discussion about it, but I think that it's, to use Ken's term, I think it's kicking it down, the can down the road a little bit, because we've, we're here because we've done some work, and we're here because we've. The process has gone through, and this is the process. If we are gonna, I'm talking, sir.
So am I understanding that this is, so this is happening? So this has been in the pipeline?
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Fair.
Please. I lost my train of thought, thank you, but we've done our due diligence as council members by reading and understanding this. It's, everyone's, we don't do a work session on every ordinance. I understand this is maybe at. It's close to people's hearts, right? But at the same time, if we did a ordinance, a public hearing for every ordinance that we're going to do, the process would be that big red tape thing that we never cross in city government. So we are the elected officials of members of this 5,000 community, and they rely on us to be their voice and reason when called upon, and that's why we're elected. If we rely on every person to have their say, which is great and to process, then we wouldn't need a city council to make the decision. We'd just simply take a show of hands. But we are the elected seven members of this body that represent the city, and it's our job to do the work of the people in a timely manner. I think that's where we're at. That's just mine. Thank you. Mr. Dowdell, I will yield.
So am I understanding correctly that this has been in the pipeline, you and Linda, like this, this has been a project?
No, Mr. Kezey, through his attorney, presented an ordinance. I went through it and indicated that there were things that I absolutely could not recommend passing, if those were still in there. And so Mr. Kezey's attorney made those changes and then presented his own AIS.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote.
Sikora.
No.
Trensy O'Donnell.
No.
Deon.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
For those leaving us, have a great night. You're more than welcome to stick around, though. I know there's a lot more excitement coming up here. I have nothing to report. Does anyone from council have anything to report tonight?
Yes, really quickly to expound upon something Ken just said, I was in, well, I've been trying to get in contact with a resident who reached out to you, Mr. Mayor, who is complaining about a very pungent and frequent weed smell at the corner of our street, we're sort of the elbow of Auburn, and.
They're actually, the person who called me is actually a Shelby Township resident.
Shelby Township resident, yeah. So I've been trying to get in contact with him. I think he thinks I'm a politician, and so he's not picking up. But, yeah, I wanted to bring that to your attention again, and also pile on that, yeah, the ordinance, which I, you know, the marijuana ordinance says that there can't be any smell outside of the property itself. That is definitely not happening. I mean, it's, it's. Pungent is not even a strong enough word. If you're driving past it, you'll smell it. If you live where I live, during harvest time, you can smell it. I mean, it is, it's rough. It really is. So, yeah, if we can get a little bit of attention on that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Has this been passed on to the city inspectors?
You've driven past Randazzles and 23 and Hayes, that place is, you can tell there's a bunch of growers over there. You know what I'm saying? Does anybody know what I'm talking about?
Shelby Township growers?
I'm just saying.
Car drivers.
It's pretty pungent over there.
Thank you, guys. Does anyone else on council have anything to report today?
No, sir.
Ms. Amanda, Planning Commission?
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, over the past year and a half, we have been looking at updating the city of Utica's master plan. And at Wednesday's Planning Commission meeting, why do you have to have this? At Wednesday's Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended that the master plan go to city council for review and release to 42-day public review and comment. So basically, tonight, we're looking for a resolution to release the plan for 42-day public review and comment, which means it will be a draft version that's available on the city website for the public to review. And after that period closes, we would then hold a public hearing at Planning Commission and then vote to adopt the plan. Really briefly, just going through it, the bones of the plan generally remained the same from 2017. We obviously updated the entire demographic section, updated all of the maps, the existing land use sections. Made some general, minor changes to the future land use plan, which just included adding some additional language to the DMXD district to solidify that there must be a mix of uses in the downtown. Specifically, if it's going to be an office use, it needs to be in conjunction with a retail use or residential use to ensure that there is that true MXD district. And then added some additional language to the implementation section, just talking about reviewing the city's existing ordinances to make sure they match up with the city's vision for the future, collaborate with the county on the regional housing plan, and also. Look to adopt and rezone properties to the new MXD districts and DMXD districts over the course of the next five years of this plan. So as I said, Planning Commission was pretty happy with the plan that was drafted in 2017. We just made minor changes, like I said, adding some language here and there, updating all the demographics, all of the maps, and of course, adding all new photos courtesy of Mayor Calendrino. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
And Councilman Robinson.
Oh, and they're beautiful, so thank you for all the photos. I'm happy to answer any questions or if you have any concerns during this 42-day period. Additional changes can be made if needed. This is a draft document. It's out there for review by all parties, and Lori and I will work together to send out public notices, get things posted in the paper. It has been proofread by our marketing team, and we did notice we need to add. We need to make two additional changes to the facilities and operations chapter. They should be simply numerical, just revising number of city staff. But that's something we can do tomorrow morning before we get it posted on the website as well, so.
Our old logos still are.
Oh, my gosh, I know, sorry.
Page.
Which page?
Four.
Page four, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I will take the blame for that. I took Amanda's last hard copy where she had written it.
Yes, it is true.
That actually is my.
And it was also a late night that night.
That was a little late, wasn't it?
Yeah. You may need to remind me again tomorrow morning.
Question for you.
Yes.
On the drawing you have of the city on the future land use.
Yes.
It's all color-coded.
Yes, I.
I don't know what the color is.
Yes, it got cut off as well, so I need to have my graphic technician amend that page so that you can see it's page. Sixty-two. I can see exactly where we got lost. So I will have my GIS and graphics person up, move the legend up so you can see what everything is. Oh, thank you. Lori's texting me all these things, so I'll remember them. So I apologize that that is missing. I guess the one thing to bring up, based on our discussions earlier with the presentations for the packing plant, right now we left it as mixed-use transition, which is basically a high-density residential, but also office space, mixed-use buildings. It's pretty vague. It's a tough parcel. I don't know necessarily that we need to change it in the future land use plan, but if we wanted to, we could change it to downtown mixed-use versus more of the residential focus, if that's something that we wanted to do, just based on some of the conversations we've had in the Brownfield presence. But again, it is, it's a future land use plan. It's not a zoning map, so it's, you know, it's not set in stone. It doesn't put us in any sort of rigid spot.
And I don't think any future plans are written in stone.
No.
Or even sand yet, so I think we're fine.
So.
Several of our council, any opinions? So you're looking for a motion to release the city of Utica 2024 through 2029 master plan for 42-day public review and comment?
That is correct.
Can you send something with the colors?
Yes. I will do that first thing tomorrow. Yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to do that, and please include a color-coded.
Yes.
Send it to Mayor. Mayor can send out, so I don't know what the colors are, or just that whole page.
Yep.
Thank you.
Motion by Sikora.
Support.
Support by Robinson. Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trensy O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deon.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
And if anyone has noticed any errors, please send them to Lori, and she'll pass them on to me, and we'll get those remediated, and then update the plan accordingly on the website as needed, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A lot of hard work there. Mr. Agusa, you've been so quiet, I hardly even noticed you back there.
Good evening. I believe you have the poverty application packet, and that needs to be updated. Every homeowner in the state of Michigan has a right to apply for poverty to reduce their property taxes. It's a state form of the application. Every community has a guideline application, or guideline packet. And within that guideline, there are the federal income tax, or income levels that have to be updated every year. January, the Health and Human Services updates those income levels, and that's made part of the poverty guidelines. And that's what's being presented to you guys today to approve those guidelines for the poverty application for property owners. If there's any questions?
I'm making a motion to adopt the 2024 Poverty Exemption Guideline for Poverty Tax Reform as presented by Tom Agusa, our assessor.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Robinson, any.
Deon.
Oh, I'm sorry, support by Deon. Any discussion from council?
Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trensy O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deon.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Agusa. Nothing from building tonight. Ms. Francis, anything to report from the library?
Otherwise, thank you, council, for conceding the.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Assistant Fire Chief Randy Plant had to leave. He did tell me that he had nothing to report tonight. Chief Kaluzny?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, I have one agenda item summary that I'm going to cover, and it's regarding traffic control order 24-01. A joint meeting was conducted between the Utica Police Department and Sterling Heights Police Department regarding some signage issues and some traffic issues on non-canals, specifically at Canal and McKay. One of the complaints was that when traffic is backed up and waiting for vehicles to turn on McKay, that vehicles are actually driving onto the shoulder, onto residents' drives to kind of pass there. And when my sergeant was out there, he actually witnessed a car specifically do that. After studying the traffic patterns, it's agreed that two no-driving-on-shoulder signs be placed on canal to prevent vehicles from illegally passing on the right, and also kind of given us the ability to enforce that area. The traffic control order that I submitted, that's order 24-01, kind of specifies the location of the two signs. So I'd be looking for request and motion to approve traffic control order 24-01, and have DPW order and install the two signs according to the traffic control.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council?
Has there been accidents over there or speeding going on that you observed?
There has not been accidents regarding speeding. I actually had a resident come into my office today and want to kind of discuss speeding issues and then some ideas that he had. So we definitely do have a speeding issue over there.
So it's fortunate there hasn't been accidents yet.
That's correct.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Chief.
Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trensy O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deon.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight, Chief?
Just real quick, just a couple, real quick updates. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and council. As you guys remember, we are outfitting our new Chevy Tahos. You see them out there this last week. I had the ability to kind of speak with the rep from Berger Chevrolet, and he let me know that the new price of the Tahos has gone up almost $12,000 from when we bought them this year and stuff, so.
Each vehicle?
Each vehicle. So we've saved, you know, purchasing the five vehicles, almost $60,000 just from last year's model year of the vehicles that we purchased to the new vehicle. So just like take a moment to thank the council for approving that purchase, and it couldn't come at a better time, at a great, you know, fiscally responsible thing for the citizens and for the city, so thank you for that. Last thing I have is Officer Ryan Bowes. He was here for one of the awards. This is something new that we're kind of starting on, and we're creating a kind of a youth department liaison. So Officer Bowes went and met with two of our schools. He's going to start introducing himself, and what he's going to do is kind of bridge that gap between the schools and the police department. So he's going to get in, kind of, if they have meetings, if they want to have, you know, discussions with the kids, you know, regarding any type of thing. It's really kind of a good kind of bridge to really, you know, introduce the kids to law enforcement, to our officers, and really kind of get that discussion going. He's really excited about it. One of his prior things in coming to the department was, he ran youth sports, he ran youth activities at his church and stuff, so he's really kind of the best puzzle piece to kind of put in that position. So just kind of let you know and let the residents and the schools know, please feel free to reach out to us. Officer Bowes will be happy to come out, speak to your organization, speak to your children, and really looking forward to incorporating that police and community aspect. Other than that, that's all I have for my reports.
Thank you, Chief. Superintendent Diamond?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Got a couple of things on the agenda today. The first one is the purchase and the repurpose of one of the police vehicles, the patrol vehicles. The VIN number is below, I think it's 108 is the number of the vehicle. I'm requesting to purchase the PD patrol vehicle, which was approved at the December 8th meeting to be sold by PD for $12,000. The vehicle was inspected by my mechanics, and after discussing with Chief Kaluzny and Officer Frank John George, we feel that the repurpose of this vehicle is in the city's best interest. The current superintendent that I drive, the Dodge Ram with the plow, will now go into daily, into the fleet. An extra pickup works out well, especially with our aging fleet as they are, so. The, my mechanics will be removing all the necessary previous uplifts for further PD use. That's why we got a little bit cheaper price than, than I think that the fire department got. We're handling all that for the chief to use for the new vehicles, and then it'll be rebranded with the new DPW logos. And I am currently looking for the extended warranty. I've made a couple of phone calls. I believe it has an option of adding it on. I want to see what the price is. It does have a new engine in it, I think 15,000 miles ago, so it's basically a new vehicle. So it'll work out well. Better for me. I don't really need the large pickup truck. The guys could definitely use it a lot more than I can, so. Making a motion to approve the purchase of the Utica Police Department patrol vehicle with the VIN number attached there for $12,000 from the Street Department and vehicle purchase GL 101-441-986-000 into the Police Department sale of fixed assets 101-301-693-000.
Move. Who made the motion? Motion by O'Donnell, support by Sikora. Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trensy O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deon.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
And then along with that, then I would just need to amend fiscal year 2024, general fund the Street and Parks Department budget, so I'm going to be transferring the $12,000 from the Parks Department of vehicle purchase GL 101. GL one oh one seven five one nine eight six zero 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 to the street department vehicle purchase, the one oh one four four one nine eight six zero zero zero.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Sikora, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. The next agenda item is for our new two-year contract with HydroCorp. HydroCorp's been doing cross connections for communities and companies for over thirty years. We've had them with our city since 2016. I've worked with them in the past cities that I've been with too. The funding that we pay is resident-based, so this is just the revenue that comes in and becomes an expenditure right away. So it pays for itself through water billing. The contract period would be backdated until February first because this paperwork didn't come in until after the January meeting and run through January thirty-first, 2016. I just want to say, when you're looking at the AIS, I mistyped and it wasn't caught that the residential rates and the commercial rates, the numbers are correct, it's just the opposite. So the commercial rates are the five sixty-one a month and the residential rates will be the thirteen forty-five a month. So there is an increase, obviously, just like everything else. But it's a good company, they keep us in compliance with Eagle. Everything is handled in-house, in their house, and they send us reports and everything else is all handled by them, so. I'm looking for a motion to approve the new proposed two-year contract with HydroCorp for our cross connection control program, beginning February first, 2024 and until January thirty-first, 2026.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by O'Donnell, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And then with that, we need to amend the fiscal year 2024 revenue for the cross connection. We put the money in for the revenue because we pay first and then when the bills come in and because of the increase, we need to increase it until July first. So I'm making a motion to amend fiscal year 2024 revenue cross connection, excuse me, five nine two zero 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 six zero seven five zero one and expenditure cross connection control, five nine two five three six eight one seven zero 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 in the amount of $1,000 to reflect the increase of HydroCorp to new two-year contract rates.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by? O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote please.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
I'll be brief, I know we're late, just a couple of things going. The GIS system is up and running very well. I've had a couple of guys out there doing our outfalls, our point inspections. So we're getting that, they're getting used to it. I will be able to, you know, send it to you so you can take a look at it yourself and give you some log-ons. Lead service lines, we will be starting up again with those soon, hopefully, end maybe, maybe the end of this week or next week. We applied for the lead service line replacement grant funding, which actually is for the point inspections. And that actually backdates till October of 2023. It'll actually pay us for our crews doing the work that they're doing. So cross our fingers that we get that grant. It'll all go by our work orders that we submit at the end. So hopefully that goes through HRC and the mayor and I, we got that going. Glee, while we're still working on our, the rate changes, which will be affected August first. We don't have our concrete numbers yet. Christmas lights are all done and we got to get the last couple around the library and they are done for the year. The confined space training at A-line went very well. We had eight, we had ten other communities that came in and did the training with them. So we have certification on all our field crew for the confined space. MS four permitting, which is our separate stormwater system. I've had updates with Christine Kadek, who is our Eagle rep. We have sixteen outfalls in the city that actually just finished, the guys just finished doing their inspection. So we'll be uploading and keeping our report. We have been lax on that for the last couple of years, so I'm trying to get ahead of it and keeping it on point, so we're in compliance and we have no violations. We started our monthly inspections over again. There is going to be a big project going on on Van Dyke. It's an M-dot fiber optic project. They should be getting their permits for us. I don't believe they have come in yet, but they have their M-dot for all the counties. It is from, it's on Van Dyke from M-59 to Twenty-three Mile, Twenty-three Mile to Grashit and Grashit back to M-59. Just boring for fiber optic. So they're talking about a late February start, early March. So Van Dyke will probably be a little hairy on the southbound side. It'll be going in the right of way. I had crews out there today marking it. HRC sent them our mapping of our sewer and our water, so we shouldn't have any issues. But when you see that, you'll know that's what's going on. Other than that, the two land posts that were hit by vehicles, one in front of Chase and the one in front of Hayes have been replaced. We also have two other new ones that were sandblasted that have been replaced. One of them is in front of the library, the other one is at the corner of Moscone. We have one more ready to go that should be installed this week and three others that have been sandblasted that we're working on replacing. So they are moving along. As soon as these are done, we'll get a couple more in to get sand blasted to keep moving on. We had a couple of water main breaks again since our last meeting. One was on McKay Court and one was on Hawn, just west, just east of Van Dyke. Both repaired without issues with our crews. And our M-dot map, our Act fifty-one map needs to be updated. There is a couple of things that were not taken care of. In the past, we had to decertify or declassify a couple of streets that weren't. Cass Avenue that is no longer there on the other side of M-59. They had Moscone on there twice and didn't have Cawthorne Lane. And then Davis, which is now our driveway into our library, those streets weren't as declassified. So that will be coming forth to you in March meeting to send back out to M-dot, so we are in compliance with that. Other than that, everything's moving fine with all our projects. If you have any questions for me? I hope I can answer.
Great job, Bill.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the treasurer, Mr. Paternoster. He's also our video operator. We're on a high budget here in the city of Utica.
He needs like an entrance team like a restaurant. He comes to treasurer.
Good evening, mayor and council. You have on, in your agenda packet, a, an item entitled OPEB valuation agreement for the fiscal years ending June thirty, twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. The governmental accounting standards board mandates that we obtain a valuation of the retiree healthcare benefits that we offer to our employees on at least once every two years. And in the odd years, a, shall we say lighter valuation? And we've been working with this company, CBIZ Retirement Plan Services, for a number of years now. And each year, we would enter into an engagement and then fight over the price. And so being a little bit proactive here and getting a two-year plan for the fiscal year that we're currently in. And then the subsequent year, once we get to that point, we'll have to go out for proposals because the state mandates that every eight years, we either get a new actuary or go through a process of having the actuary audited. And nobody really knows what is involved in an audit because the Act hasn't been around long enough to force people to do that yet. So anyway, CBIZ has submitted a service agreement for the fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five valuations. For 2024, it would be an interim year and I can't read this, two thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars, I believe it is. And then for 2025, six thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Those services would be performed in the fiscal years ending June thirty, 2025 and 2026. So there is no impact on the current fiscal year budget. There are no grants involved. The motion that I am requesting is approval of the service agreement so that the mayor can sign it and will be, have our costs established when we're preparing the twenty-five and twenty-six budgets.
And I'll support that.
Motion by Sikora.
I said I'll support that.
Support by Robinson, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Mr. Paternoster, anything else to report tonight?
I just want to remind the taxpaying property owners. This is February, the last day for payment of your 2023 property taxes. To the treasurer's office here is February twenty-ninth. If payment's not received by close of business on the twenty-ninth, you'll have to make payment to the Macomb County Treasurer with late fees and interest. So I urge you to get your payment in by the twenty-ninth.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, report from administration.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'll just report that we are, we are good going forward for our election that's coming up on the twenty-seventh. In-person voting starts this Saturday. And I'll just remind our residents, the information is on our website and here at City Hall. We've paired up with Sterling Heights for the nine days of early voting. Any residents who have an absentee ballot can take that ballot to Sterling Heights and feed it into the Utica tabulator themselves during those nine days of early voting. So that's all I have to report today.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec, anything to report?
So first off, mayor, I definitely want to thank you for Pavilion at Pioneer Park. I know you've been working on it for years and you've done it now, basically. So yes, thank you.
Our state rep actually did most of it.
But you lobbied for it, you worked on it for a long time, so.
Thank you.
It's very much appreciated. Second off, I just want to remind everybody that our normal Parks and Rec meetings are the second Wednesday of the month. However, tomorrow being Valentine's Day and Ash Wednesday, we did move it to the third Wednesday on the twenty-first. So anybody who wants to join us, it's on the twenty-first this month, this month only. Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Nothing from the historic district commission. Ms. McGrail, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
At this point, we open up the floor for communication from the public for any item not on the agenda. You will be allowed three minutes to address councils or anyone that would like to speak.
Yes, Jim Stone, four five two eight zero, Clinkhammer. Don't want to be long, it's been a long night. I want to talk about electric vehicles and the charging stations. We're getting a new, if we're going to get a new sports facility, we're getting marijuana businesses. I encourage those owners or whatever the system is to put some electrical vehicle charging stations in them. I saw two of them in use earlier this month on Belle Isle by the Belle Isle Nature Zoo. They were filled, the others a line to get in on them. We could debate the cost of gas. I think when the summer comes and the demand goes up, the price is going to go up and more and more people are using these vehicles. So if there's place to charge them, they're going to look around for a place to go eat and do things with their family. So I encourage all Utica businesses to try and put these, put this infrastructure in place in this early part of the 21st century.
Thank you. Just to be clear, if you have something to talk about, like that could be occurring in the future, like perhaps our scoring criteria for this marijuana ordinance, it looks like we might have some marijuana comments that want to be made here tonight, that's fine, but we're not going to address the vote that was taken directly.
And I'm not going to argue at quarter eleven, have you guys choke me, Rob Huth. I'll talk about looking to the future. Just want to also correct the record with respect to Councilman O'Donnell's comment that all these people here, are they with the same entity? And someone said, yes, all eight are. That's not true. When it comes to the scoring criteria, you'll see applications by, I'm sure, at least two entities, not just one. And your lawyer will tell you that you have a duty to be fair, be competitive, give everybody a chance. What gives me a great deal of comfort is knowing the reputation of you people and know that you will handle it in a fair manner. And maybe that scoring criteria will also take into account, what do you do if it's a tie? Maybe you add another location. Keeping in mind, the places that were cited with two and three locations don't have 100,000 cars going through them a day. Those of us that have been around long enough know that this area was not part of Utica, it was part of Shelby Township. Utica got it from Shelby during a four twenty-five, section four twenty-five action in the 1990s. Shelby lost it. It's an area that.
Actually, Utica got it way before then.
I have to say.
I grew up with it.
UG corners.
And just so as a final matter, thank you for your attention to this matter. We know you're going to run a fair process and we look forward to giving you a very good application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public?
Do you need name and address? St. Ambrose Toma, four seven six seven seven, Melonis Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan. I'd like to thank you guys for considering adding another store. I'd like to point out that in the ordinance, in section F, number twelve, that you are allowed to add anything that the council deems fit for the scoring. And when these applications are scored or whoever's scoring them, you know, they should be maybe made aware that, you know, which application wrote it, because one of those applications will be coming in and they did write it. You know, unfortunately, Councilman O'Donnell, your fear might be a little correct. It might be slanted a little anti-cabaret. But, you know, we're confident in you guys do the right thing and be fair. And I'm excited to put my application in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Uh, yes.
You have to go to the podium.
Is there a time that we can ask questions about what had gone on with the scoring system? Is what you adopted, the whole ordinance and all the like 12 factors?
The ordinance provides factors that may be included in the scoring system and then it also includes a kind of a catch-all for anything else that council may want to do. It didn't have any points actually attached to that. So council is still going to have to formally develop how that scoring criteria is going to happen. That would be the next step before, you know, applications are drafted and, you know, sent out for people to fill out.
Okay, and then when it does come up where the applications are going to be ready, that's something that's just going to be on the website and we'll kind of.
First thing will be scoring process, that's going to have to come back to council for council to actually prove what that criteria is. And then we're not going to draft the application until we know what the scoring is because we want to know what to ask for in the application, right?
Right.
So then we will have to draft an application and then we'll set a deadline on that and it probably, I think, probably would be online. But if you keep an eye on the meetings and the minutes, you'll know there.
Right, so you guys are still going to get somebody outside to score the system?
The ordinance says that. The ordinance says that council can designate a person to do it. You know, so council's going to have to decide if we hire an outside person or if we do it internally.
Okay, so anytime that we would have any kind of questions or whatever on some of the 12 factors that were in there that we could just talk to the council to submit some...
I mean, you can ask people about those factors, but they're not set in stone yet. They don't have to be in the scoring criteria.
Okay.
They could be changed. They could be weighted way different. So I don't know how much clarification you would get from anyone at this point.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? It looked like you were leaning on. No?
No, I was going to go through with you.
Mr. Stone, you want another shot at? All right. All right, for the record, that's all the public comment we have tonight. I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, supported.
I don't even know who made that.
Motion by Socora, support by Rob...